Next up is Tina Honeycutt.
Ms. Honeycutt, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Tina Honeycutt, and I'm listening to all of these folks articulate so well. The ideas that I want to get across to you, and I just am kind of at a loss for words at this hour of the evening and at this impasse. I told you that I would be here each week to remind you that I want you to do something to deal with this difficulty. And I'm so disappointed that here we still are. And, and we all know, and it's been said multiple times, there aren't enough beds now in the shelters. There aren't housing solutions. We're, we're expecting people to just deal with the fact that there is no way to get them into housing. Housing first, okay? We've got a couple of programs. Where are we? It's March, gosh, we're now the 4th. And the new Centerstone Housing First program was supposed to open on February 1st. So even with the longer term solutions, people are just being told, well, we can't help you. No one will rent to you. And people are stuck. Please vote yes on 2106. Please re, i-if you don't want to vote yes, because the amendments actually make it where it really doesn't do very much good for anyone. So revisit, talk about actually taking this to committee and doing something. There isn't time to wait. There wasn't time to wait before. There certainly isn't time to wait now. That's it. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Nico Rocha.
Ms. Rocha, you have three minutes. Welcome. Please go ahead.
Hi, sorry about that. We have a few, sorry, there's a technical difficulties. We have a few people wanting to speak. I'm going to pass the mic off first.
Hi, my name is Patrick Sailing, and I organized with the Poor People's Campaign, the National Union of the Homeless, and the Bloomington Homeless Coalition. And I just want to let y'all know where we're calling you from right now. We had to set up a computer and a projector and a speaker to simply give access to the folks who are most impacted by the decisions we are making here today. We had to bring it to them because no effort was made to include those who are impacted by these decisions. And so we're out here. We've been out here for quite a few hours, and we're cold, but, but we're with family, and we've got some.
Hi, am I speaking right now? I'm not sure why I'm speaking, but I'm separate from Patrick, so I would like to let him speak, and then I would like to speak.
Okay, Mr. Sailing, I think you had a bit of time left. Is that correct, Mr. Parliamentarian?
Yeah, good, yes. Good deal. And, and we've got quite a few people here. I think we have at least two others that are going to speak after me, and I'm sure y'all will give them the time they deserve.
Mr. Sailing, I apologize for interrupting you. We're getting a lot of, or I am getting a lot of feedback anyway. So I'm wondering if there's some audio that you might want to tinker with, so.
Is it better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's a testament to the, the effort that we've had to go through just to make this meeting accessible. I hope that's known. I just want to lift a few names. I want y'all, of course, we remember JT, so we, we understand the consequences of what we're talking about here. But I don't want us to forget Iva Chatten, who was also killed while crossing the street at night when she did not have a place to go. And I want to lift up Bessie Grubb, Biggie Grubb, as many of us knew us. And, and I just want those names to be held as we're making these decisions. And I'm going to pass it off to our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sailing.
Hello, my name is Doran Taft, and I've been in Bloomington about four months.
Please go ahead.
My name is Doran Taft. I've been in Bloomington about four months, and I do have to say that the provisions that you provide for the homeless people are actually quite impressive compared to other communities. And the community actually does seem to care, which is good. Yes, they do need a voice in what happens to them, and that's not provided as, is often, as is oft, as often happens in cities. You know, it's, it's difficult to get everyone's input. What I do want to say is that we need a little bit more emphasis provided on job focused, you know, where people have something to do and something to look forward to, to make them feel included, to make them productive members of society. If you can have that, then you're halfway there, and then you don't have to worry so much about housing or morale. At any rate, yes, I have a tent that I set up just right here on our property, of course. You know, where we're at at a friend's place and the winter shelter. So hopefully I won't get towed. But with that note, thank you for everything, and please vote yes. Is that correct? Yes, please vote yes. There we go. And off to.
Thank you, Mr. Taft.
Um. Hello, my name is Trevor Richardson, and.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. You have three minutes.
I will not take up all of that time. I'm just going to say a couple of things. First off, I don't think that this ordinance is the end result, as was stated earlier. I think it's definitely the beginning. However, I do think it's needed. I've lost a lot of friends to these streets, to the cold. Not just the cold, to the weather, period, being homeless. And that's not something I want to consent, continue to see. Martin Luther King Jr. in 1968, as part of his "I Have a Dream" speech, said that we are here to remind America that the time for urgency is now. And I would reiterate that in the city council meeting. We talk about consulting with professionals. We heard Forrest Gilmore, Reverend Gilmore, and also Ms. Kapler from Beacon, who were in support of this ordinance. We also heard from the CDC that, who I think everybody would qualify as professionals, that the encampments should have remained. And so I urge you to, to treat this as simply a human rights issue. You know, people need a place to sleep. Surely they need to be held accountable. But people need a place to sleep and, and not have to worry about. We can play semantics all we want, but not having to worry about going to jail because of trying to find a place to sleep. That being said, I'll pass it on to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Next speaker is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please introduce yourself. Your full name.
My name's Marshall Bailey.
Mr. Bailey, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Marshall Bailey. I'm a Bloomington resident. I'm a military veteran. I'm encouraging you to vote in support of this ordinance. This is a very basic item for protections that you should vote again, vote for. For the few of you that are considering not voting for it, I, I think you're going to have to take into account that some of the information that you've been fed is, is somewhat full of alternative facts. The reason everyone is here right now is for one simple reason. And that reason is failure in leadership from the mayor of Bloomington. It's a failure. If he would have sorted out any problem in a positive manner, this ordinance would not have been brought. The four of you that are being villainized, this wouldn't have happened either. So direct your anger outwardly towards the administration. They brought a freaking army in to vote against this. Say, here's, here's a budget for $500,000. Make believe numbers. I've done $20 million budgets before. You just made that up, and you make it look like, oh, my God, we have to have $500,000. Or we can't help people. We can't get a porta potty. This is basic math. You need to pass this ordinance. You need to be forward with other ordinances that are aimed towards taking some of the power away from the mayor. Budget reform. Councilmember Volin, you already brought this up, looking at South Bend's model. Do this, take some of the power away, and start solving the problems. Pass this, move it to council, so you don't adopt this silly amendment that basically was the only way to try and get it passed. That was the only way. So this is real simple stuff, real simple stuff. Again, I'm going to end it there, but direct some of this, this villainization that you've been receiving outwardly towards the administration. Because they're the ones that caused it. This is why everyone's coming at you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there another speaker on this line?
There, there's nobody else to, to speak on this account.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lucas, who's next, please?
Next up is Dave Warren.
Mr. Warren, welcome. You'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. A few years back, I participated in the City of Bloomington Citizens Academy, which I recommend to anyone who wants to learn more about all the different functions of city government. The County Citizens Academy is also fantastic, and both are free. One thing I vividly remember about our City Citizens Academy class was the night we met at the police station. One of the officers asked the 20 or so of us a question. He said, what is the first priority of a police officer? Guesses included keep the peace, protect the community. Sure, the officer said, we have to do those things. But one thing is more important than anything else. Our first priority is to protect your constitutional rights. That is true, of course. It's a basic tenet of American government and law enforcement. But that an officer reminded the class about this right from the start really stuck with me. And I tell that story to my Urban Problems and Solutions class every semester because it highlights what law enforcement is indeed supposed to do. Protect our rights. But the city's own ordinances put the police in a bind. How can they protect the civil rights of our homeless neighbors while simultaneously being compelled by the City of Bloomington's ordinances to arrest them for exercising those rights? That is why we are here. Obviously, this ordinance is not a solution to homelessness, but that is not what this ordinance is about, not at all. This ordinance is about upholding the civil rights of a community with the least amount of political and economic power among us. Civil rights should never be put to a cost benefit test. That leads down ugly, though unfortunately well-worn paths. Protecting civil rights, especially the rights of those with the least amount of power, is a central function of government. Bloomington's local government provides all sorts of services and invests in all sorts of things. The local government owns and operates a 27-hole golf course that requires an annual subsidy roughly equivalent to what the deputy mayor estimated is the cost of a good outdoor bathroom.
It's important to remind people like how easy.
Someone else is talking.
Could you excuse me for a second, Mr. Warren, Mr. Lucas? Sounds like we're getting some interference. Could you, you please? Mr. Warren, please go on. Sorry for the interruption.
It's okay. Okay, so where were we? Local government provides all sorts of services and invests in all sorts of things. The local government owns, oh, sorry, we got that. The golf course gets a, a annual subsidy roughly equivalent to what the deputy mayor estimated is, is the cost of a good outdoor bathroom. The local government is willing to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for several welcome monuments. The local government runs a farmer's market. These are all non-essential things that the city has decided pass a cost benefit test. Civil rights should never be put to a cost benefit test, but many in the city's administration and three or four here on council tonight appear willing to go down that path. Indeed, they're not even willing to propose amendments or alternatives to this ordinance. If you're unsure about this, please choose to err on the side of protecting the constitutional rights of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Lucas?
Next, we have Martin Law.
Mr. Law, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, members of the city council. My name is Martin Law. I am, as Jada B. mentioned earlier, a member of the core council of Black Lives Matter Bloomington, and I'm an instructor at Indiana University. One of the things I've heard a lot of council members say today, including Councilmember Scambleary, that, that's the person I remember saying it first, was that this ordinance has, has been very divisive and that that was kind of an account against it. And I think that part of the problem is that people are not distinguishing between the ordinance and the discourse around the ordinance. I think the ordinance itself is not terribly divisive. As the sponsors have said repeatedly, this ordinance is designed to remove a legal barrier to people sleeping. I don't think anyone on this call would disagree that people ought to be able to sleep. And, and that is a problem that they aren't able to do so legally. And this ordinance, 202106, seeks only to remove that barrier. It's a simple solution to a, a simple problem that we all agree on. Now, further, we, we heard, we heard from the city that there's been a lot of budget problems that were incurred based on the sort of ad hoc and inefficient way that we've been dealing with, problems that already exist, that would, that exist without an ordinance like 2106. As Councilmember Flaherty pointed out, a lot of the, the, the things brought up by the city and by the police are due to us not having, or not maybe due to, but are happening without an ordinance, and I would argue are exacerbated by not having ordinance like this. We don't, we don't create people sleeping in the park by having ordinance 2106 accepted and passed. We have that now. Ordnance 2106 simply allows the city to budget and spend its time and resources more efficiently. Businesses aren't suddenly burdened with the nuisance of unhoused people because we have ordinance 2106. No, people are already using private facilities because they don't have public facilities at their disposal. Right? So these problems already exist. Ordnance 2106 simply gives us a way to address problems that already exist. It's a simple solution to a problem that we all agree on. As the, the Continuing Care Board said in the letter that they submitted, this ordinance actually serves the entire community. It doesn't only serve some segments of the community. It serves all of us. So if there's divisiveness, I think it's in the discourse around the ordinance and not the ordinance itself. So I would encourage those of you who are going to be voting later this evening or this morning to consider the ordinance itself and not the discourse around it. The ordinance itself is not divisive. It's a simple solution to a simple problem. And so I would encourage you to take it in those terms, and please support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Jennifer Pearl with the B E D C.
Right.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jennifer Pearl, and I am the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, or B E D C, which is a nonprofit dedicated to the retention, development, and attraction of quality jobs for all of Monroe County. Thank you, council members, staff, and our fellow community members. We realize that everyone has put a great deal of work into this matter. We have four primary concerns with this ordinance. One is that our employers have experienced health, safety, and security issues around encampments. Two, there are legal, financial, and administrative issues with the ordinance itself. Three, a healthy, vibrant community depends on welcoming safe and clean public spaces for residents, employers, and visitors. And four, we agree with others that the ordinance is there to address homelessness, about which we are very concerned. Although we do not support this particular ordinance, the solution that the B E D C strongly favors is a collaborative approach to supporting our unhoused neighbors. This includes the Housing and Security Working Group, being led by the Community Foundation and United Way. Individually, organizations may struggle to find solutions that work for everyone in our community, but we can contribute within our areas of expertise. This would enable us to identify trends, gaps, and best practices such that community partners can support solutions within each of our capabilities. This could be through a combination of funding, services, connections with employers, or forced development resources, legislation, or other means. Cross-sector collaborative regional efforts are truly needed to address the systemic underlying causes of homelessness. We look forward to opportunities to collaborate and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, and I'm not sure if they would still like to comment, Chris Branham.
Hi, yeah.
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. No, I just wanted to say that just disappointing to hear council members speak about being, feeling vilified when there are people literally being vilified for sleeping. I live in the Bryant Park neighborhood. I support Isabel Piedmont Smith on this. You know, I think people are worried about divisiveness and they want unity, but that unity does not include the citizens in this community who are homeless. There's no desire for unity with them. And I'm not sure how voting this down achieves unity in any sort of way. The issue will still be there, and the divisiveness will still be there. What common ground is there to be found with somebody who supports removing an encampment in the middle of December? Where do I find common ground with somebody who thinks that's a good thing to do to people? I also think that it's great that a lot of people on here say, well, I care. We all care about the homeless. Well, now is a chance to do something, to show that you care. Not that you just care about the issue on a federal level, but it's right in your own backyard. So show that you care now. Or otherwise, if you care, come with the amendments. Come with what you want to achieve. No one is saying that decriminalizing sleeping outside will end homelessness. Nobody says that decriminalizing drugs will end addiction, but we all must recognize that it can help people to achieve a level of dignity and to get them the services they need without fear of punitive measures being taken against them. You know, I, I want to see this pass because of the fact that people should not, at the moment, it is illegal to be homeless. Yes, they can sleep in the parks, just not at night is the problem, right? We all like to sleep, and I'd like to be asleep right now too, but I wanted to comment on this. But to just sit there and say, well, it's not illegal to be homeless. Yes, it is at the moment, and we need to change that right now. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. I hope I pronounced that correctly. So, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Nathan Muchler.
Mr. Muchler, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank the sponsors of this ordinance for bringing it forward and for making a valiant and successful effort to keep our community safe. I would like to thank in advance everyone who votes in favor of this ordinance for your, your bravery, your courage, your focus, and your dedication. I want to speak about what this ordinance is limited to. I think that there's concerns about what do we do with our homeless brothers and sisters, and those are very real concerns. The concerns of the people who own businesses and employees, they're, they're real concerns. We can quibble or argue about the validity of those concerns, but they're real. I want to say why I personally believe there's a problem. There's a problem because right now, if you don't live in a house or feel comfortable or welcome or safe in a shelter, you have no home. And when you have no home, you have nothing to take care of. People who have a home take care of their homes. People who don't know whether the next day, the next hour, they're going to become and be roustied out and moved along, kicked out. There's no reason for them to take care of their space. There's no reason for someone to, to not litter, to, to not clean up and maintain a safe environment if they have a, a fair, good faith belief that the Bloomington Police Department is going to come and just move them along at any given point. All this ordinance is doing is creating a way to give people a home that they can take care of. Once they have that home, I have every faith that they will maintain their and that many of these concerns that people are bringing from outside the homeless community will go away. Why? Because no one wants to live in, in filth or excrement or needles. People do it because cost benefit analysis that when they don't have a home, they should not need to take care of it. Give people a home, and they will take care of it, and we will take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Nathan Rider.
Mr. Rider, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. In addition to being a proud Bloomington resident for the past three years, I'm a student body representative for IU Bloomington as well. I think we should appreciate that for a split council, I've only heard one constituent here so far who has an issue with the ordinance. We've heard from several residents who are fighting for survival tonight, like every night, and all they're asking of you is to say yes. It seems like the crux of this issue is not the ordinance. It is deciding if this is your problem. If people can be too poor to be represented. The two sides of this issue come from the same reasoning. We do know, we do not want residents of our city to live on the street. We agree on that, and you know, who probably agrees with that as well as our unhoused residents. Where we split is how we go about doing it. On one side, we believe it is our duty as council members and residents alike to get our fellow residents in crisis trying to survive what they need to get out of their situation. Or we can continue what we're doing by destroying their shelters, and I don't know, hope they disappear. Conducting late night raids on encampments, destroying the few possessions our unhoused residents have, is not helping. They're still here because Bloomington is their city too. You can, you cannot expect people to pull themselves up by their bootstraps if you throw away their boots. Deep down, that strategy is rooted in an idea that if we are cruel enough to people trying to survive, they will give up because, become someone else's problem. That strategy is called a war of attrition. You attempt to win a war by wearing down your enemy to the point of collapse, and the war is won by the side with greater resources. I ask you, are we at war with our poorest residents? Are we saying only people with money in the city deserve respect and basic human rights? I don't remember. It's too divisive to help poor people in the Bible, but maybe you can help me find it. Many of us here, and this council included, are descendants of people who passed through Ellis Island, where it reads, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these the homeless tempest tossed me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." I think that's pretty apt. Where is our humanity? Where is our humanity? We are not like New York City where there, there is a relatively finite number of people here who need housing. And we have more than enough resources to help them. We just have to make a decision to do so. Now you'll back.
Mr. Ryder, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Riley Foster.
Welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Riley Foster, and I am a student at IU Bloomington, and also a constituent of Councilman Fallon. And I quickly just want to say tonight that I find that Bloomington is my community, and I want this community to be the best it can be. And right now, after these hours of deliberation, I feel like this council is, is not achieving this ability. And I fully support this bill, and while it has many, it has many shortcomings, and while I understand that it is the first step to solving this very complex multifaceted issue, it is the bare minimum that this council can do. I want to remind you all that you have the power to make a difference. You are our leaders in the city, and listening to us is the least you can do. And I know that Bloomington can be better. And I, I know that I chose IU Bloomington because I saw this city for what it was. And so when you think of how you're going to vote tonight, think about what you want this, the city of Bloomington to be in the future, and how you want to treat our neighbors that are homeless to fix that. Thank you.
Ms. Foster, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Sam Waterman.
Mr. Waterman, welcome. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Samantha Waterman. I am the president of College Democrats at IU, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my organization's views. So I want to start out by pointing out that Mary Catherine Carmichael, earlier in this meeting, stated that the city of Bloomington considers homelessness a temporary condition. To me, that was really surprising, because it seems like Bloomington is doing everything it can to make homelessness a permanent condition. And I would like to point out that homelessness was not just temporary for J.T. Vanderberg, because Bloomington's actions in displacing him caused his death. Homelessness was the last thing he ever experienced, because the city failed him over and over and over again. And the city will continue to fail more homeless numbers in this community if the city continues on this trajectory. If all those opposed to this ordinance want to preach about caring about the homeless community, then please show it, and please show it tonight. Because if you don't begin to show it, I will assure you that there are plenty of people in this city that do care, and these are people that will gladly unseat you. And when council members go out of their way to exclude certain council members from this vote, that just shows how much they don't care about the most vulnerable members of this community. To me, it is disgusting, and it really makes me ashamed to live here. And so finally, Councilwoman Scimberlary, I really urge you to reconsider your vote. This comes down to you tonight, ultimately. Whether people live or die is ultimately up to you. I speak for the College Democrats when I say that we would be incredibly disappointed if you did not stand up for the most vulnerable people in our community. Your voter base is made up of many IU students. We love working with you. We appreciate how receptive you are to our ideas, and we feel truly respected by you, and we are begging you to make the right choice tonight. Thank you so much. That is all I have to say.
Ms. Waterman, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Ronald Baer.
Mr. Baer, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. So, everything I've heard, everything that's been discussed, it's everyone wanting this issue. I can understand how, from your seat, how it can feel like it's a tax, how it feels like people just don't get it. But every single person has put their heart out today. People in this situation, people working on the situation, being part of the solution. And they've said that this is what we do to help. This is what we do to succeed. And it might be hard, because you've already made a stance, you've already said your remarks. But these people, all these people, agree that this is what's good for them. That if they get, if they get this ordinance through, if they get this chance, it's the first step to a large solution, which is fixing the homeless population. And I, I believe that you guys will be seen as, you guys will be seen as something of the gatekeepers. And all remarks forward, it'll be, you decided to change your opinion. You decided to open the gate, allow this through. You were unsure. You thought that we may be wrong, that these people may not need to sleep at night. Sorry. But, but even still, it's like, that is what it takes, you know? Letting it through, allowing these people to sleep, allowing these people to improve their station, all that stuff further on. It's all about helping them and giving them more chances. And I believe that there have been enough voices that you can change your opinion, that you can work with us, that you can see that maybe you might have been wrong, and that's okay. No one is mad about you choosing what everyone wants. No one will be mad about you changing your mind after we've all tried our hardest to change your mind. And I, that's all I have to say, but thank you for the time and thank you for listening.
Mr. Baer, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Talisha Kopick.
Ms. Kopick, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Talisha Kopick. I'm with Downtown Bloomington, and we've worked for 40 years on the revitalization of downtown as a not-for-profit organization. We certainly appreciate all the work being done with the social service agencies. It's a tough job. But I thought it was also really important to hear all the resources the city of Bloomington is providing to help people in the community. We, however, do not support this ordinance. There's no consideration given to the impact on the surrounding neighbors, on security and maintenance issues that they've all faced with experiences with Seminary Park, and also a few years ago around Peoples Park. Those are real costs and, you know, real issues that people experience. The ordinance has several serious questions that need to be addressed for its implementation and implications that it has. Obviously, you know, a collaborative approach is going to be very important in moving forward with this. But we do not feel like this ordinance is the, the way to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Kopick, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, I believe, is Janet Arthur.
Ms. Arthur, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
I believe it's Janet with the
From the Methodist Church to its present, present location. And I just wanted to say that, and I am glad that Ms. Kopick brought this up, that the impacts of the Seminary Square encampment really haven't been talked about at all. Because this has a community impact. And very often, you know, the Indianapolis, there, it was Chapter 231, which they called the Homeless Bill of Rights, that they put into effect, which has been referenced over and over tonight as one of the building blocks of this ordinance. What they found is after that five years, not five years of unmitigated success, but incredible amounts of difficulty with what was happening to the city. So right now, yes, they have amended it, but there is a further amendment that's called Proposal 76. And in Proposal 76, the city would also seek out a piece of property, likely zoned industrial, in the greater downtown area, where a homeless encampment site could be established with trash and sanitation provisions, restrooms and showers, on-site management, and access to transportation and service providers. So what we're talking about is very much what Ms. McDevitt talked about, but not in a city park. And it does cost a great deal of money, because we're talking about providing people with humane services, not just allowing camping. And, well, if we talk about public areas with a restroom facility, we are talking about city parks. I really appreciate this issue. It helps us move it along, so thank you so much. And once again, I oppose this amendment. This ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
We have Janet Arthur maybe back and ready to comment.
Hi, guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, I need, I should walk outside, because I'm actually in a shelter right now. And I just, I can't, I can't actually speak my mind right now, but I have been living outside in various places since December 25th of this year. I was not happy with my life. I was miserable, so I prayed to God, and I said, "I'm really bored. This sucks. I can't work a job, because I'm sexually harassed at every job. What should I do, God?" And I was called to come do this. So I made a lot of mistakes. And like, I'm sitting here cussing, people are trying to sleep. I'm trying to eat food and drink water and not literally starve to death. I'm a very tiny person. I weigh about 100 pounds. So if I cannot get enough food, it's just really bad. And some of the things that people say about those people, well, guess what? I am these people. I am them. And I'm just really frustrated. Two of my best friends were some of the last to leave seminary. And like, I know, I don't even know what people think of me in this town, but I do not give a fuck what people think about me. Because the people that are surrounding me right now have blessed me so much. They, they bring me shoes and socks and food, and I call everybody else normals. I'm like, are they normals or are they us? Because one time I was in seminary, and the leaders were like, having a meeting, and there was a normal that was with a particular, I call them the white-caped do-gooders. And my friend was like, "Janet, come over here. Why is this crazy bitch like yelling at us?" And all I heard was
Ms. Arthur, please try to avoid profanity if possible.
Okay, I said my two cuss words. It won't happen again. But anyway, they were like, "Why is she yelling at us?" So I'm just really frustrated because of the way that town talks about us. People that are experiencing homelessness have to work 25 times as hard as everybody else to have nothing. And a lot of people are like, "Just get a job." Well, I am not a person that can work a job. I've worked for 37 years. And that, that's an ableist comment. And I do want to give a shout out. There was a college professor that gave me a car, and I'm partially living in that car, and it's saving lots of lives. There was a time when I could raise $1,000 in 40 minutes. Now, I just wanted to give a shout out to those of you that are sending me small amounts of money, so I can keep people from freezing to death. As far as frostbite, I personally have frostbite on five of my fingers and eight out of my 10 toes. And let me tell you about frostbite. You can't dig in your pocket. You can't find anything in transition. It's, it's really hard, because right now, between Shalom closing at four and the winter shelter opening at nine, like, there is nowhere to go. And I really can't speak very much. Well, my personal safety is not very safe, and this is messed up. I wish I had a bathroom. I wish everyone had shoes, socks, and underwear. And like, I don't know. It's really frustrating to live like this. And yeah, it sucks. It's really hard. So we demand, I demand respect for my friends and my family, because I never had that, but now I have that. Thank you.
Ms. Arthur, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Amanda Sheridan.
Ms. Sheridan, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Sheridan, and my interest in this is that several years ago, I was briefly homeless while I lived at the Middleway Shelter. I want to start out by saying that I think this ordinance was proposed with the best intentions. I also don't think it serves the best interests of either the general community or the homeless community to legalize camping out in parks. There are good reasons that it can be dangerous or unsanitary to camp in these conditions, and that's why there is now a low-barrier shelter, as well as other shelters that people can use. Many of the people who are sleeping out should actually be in mental health centers, or that they are intoxicated, and they should be in jail or in rehab. And when these groups are properly placed, there are really very few who would still want to sleep out, or that they've worn out their welcome at all of the other shelters and need to sleep out. Also remember that the homeless are still a part of the broader community. We're all in this together as a whole community, and depend on morale and the success and the safety of the local businesses and the neighborhoods. I think there's also a misunderstanding. It is not a constitutional right of all Americans to take over public property, including in parks. I've heard a lot of people on here whose hearts are in the right place tonight. But I would encourage you, if you do want to help, to redirect your efforts to making sure that there are adequate low-barrier options, and that's why I oppose this ordinance. Yield my time.
Ms. Sheridan, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is a written comment that Natalie Galvin asked me to read. The comment reads, "My name is Natalie Galvin. My connection is unstable, so thank you for reading my comment. I've already reached out to many of you to ask for your support of this ordinance tonight. I am grateful for thoughtful replies that I received. I would just like to express my disappointment in having this very important discussion on a day when our council president was understandably not able to be president, present. President Sims represents the entire community in his at-large seat and is chair of the Public Safety Committee. He's been an exemplary leader in listening to public comment around this issue especially. He's been so generous with his time when I had a recent concern about this issue, and I'm grateful for his leadership. I'm also a near-Westside resident and active member of our Near-Westside Neighborhood Association. I mention that because President Sims recently attended one of Councilmember Rosenbarger's monthly District One constituent zooms, just to listen. That matters. Constituent zooms matter. Showing up matters. I ask that in the future, our city council members are mindful of who is at the table and who is not for these very important community discussions. Thank you." And that is the end of the comment.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Galvin. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Zach Muller, who should now be ready to unmute.
Mr. Muller, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi there. Um, I know that it's late. I appreciate all of my fellow Bloomingtonians for being on the call, members of the council for taking the time. I know that it's after 1:00. I, I think that one of the things that I, I had heard earlier, and it seems to be a recurring theme, is that you know, I don't think that anybody here wants people to have to sleep outside. And I can, I can acknowledge that, you know, I think that everybody here does want to act in the, in good faith, in the best interests of everyone in Bloomington. I also have heard plenty of concerns regarding, you know, how we pay for this and how we don't get the city sued, and how we make sure that we don't create a permanent homelessness continuum here. You know, I think that one of the things that I heard a member of the city's, the city staff, and I forget who exactly it was, apologies. Essentially, the, the gist was that the city doesn't just dole out money if people don't ask for it. You know, I think that this is, we, we can find the money to do this. I trust that you are, you and your counterparts within the city, and its employees base can do the, do the work to do this if the city decides that this is important. and its employees base can do the, do the work to do this if the city decides that this is important. And it certainly sounds as if many of the people here feel that this is important. It's certainly important to me. You know, I know, this is a, this is specifically to decide if people can sleep outside and not go to jail for it. I understand that we're not trying to, we're not, the scope is not to fix homelessness and the homelessness problem, in air quotes, that we have within our city right now. You know, I think that there's a path forward where an expansion of services can happen. Collaboration with non, local nonprofits can happen. Collaboration with a lot of the mutual aid groups that don't get, get enough discussion, you know? The, you know, the Bloomington Homeless Coalition and Hotels for Homeless are the first two that come to mind off the top of my head, but they are certainly not the ones that we are limited to talking about. They are doing fantastic work on a shoestring budget. We have the, the budget of the city of Bloomington. It may not be our job as the city to fix this ourselves. But if it were other portions of our electorate, I think that we would be moving a few more mountains or molehills to try and come to a more rapid-
Ten seconds.
I appreciate all your time. I know this is difficult. I think you're good people. Please make a compassionate decision. Thank you.
Mr. Muller, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Ben Ramston.
Mr. Ramston, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I've heard a lot of people tonight demonizing any council members that would vote no to this ordinance. And about a year and a half ago, before COVID hit, or right around that time, I came to these meetings and had Ms. Piedmont Smith and Mr. Flaherty come to my home and walk around my neighborhood, which is close to Crawford Apartments, and talk to a lot of people down here and the store owners at the, what was the Village Pantry, at Dollar, at the Dollar Store and everywhere. And everyone told them that the homeless people are messing up Bloomington and that most of these people could work and have a home if they wanted to. I personally have five or six that are friends that I used to work with, play softball with. They can get jobs and they can take care of themselves. And I would be for this, and I told the council members this. If we would have places that required rehab for people, that I would support. I don't support all of this giving them free homes and feeding them for free and everything without anything. And the, as Mr. Flaherty, Flaherty and I talked about, the, what's called Housing First, that doesn't require any criminal history checks or any rehab or taking treatment or anything. Nothing. And we need to, if we really want to help people, we need to help the people that want help. So, and the, and the council members know that not just because people don't call into these meetings and talk, it's because they think that nothing will happen. Because when people like Piedmont Smith and Flaherty come down there and talk to everybody, nobody likes it. And then they go back and push something like this, if I'm not mistaken. Then why would anybody think that you're going to listen? So, anybody that's voting to keep the people off the public property, I'm all for that. So, and you're, you're not being demonized by everybody just because they don't call in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Shakila Daniel.
Welcome, Ms. Daniel. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lakila. Um, all right. So, I would like to begin, I would like to start by saying that I do support Ordinance Twenty-One-O-Six. And the fact that you all have condemned it is extremely disheartening and concerning. I live in District Four, which is Rallo's District. This council is not representative of the community, because it is all white with comfortable homes and money. I am a, I am black. I know many of my fellow community are people of color and come from different backgrounds as well. So, you need to listen to a different perspective, because I don't believe you are representing all of the community well. You all are more concerned about making Bloomington pretty and being called racist in classes instead of the real issue at hand. I also want to point out that there, that you were not being attacked. You were being held accountable for your actions. Today showed the lack of empathy class in the classes on this council who has helped plague Bloomin, Bloomington. And you all fought, fought over if these people, humans, were worth time, money, support, and even thoughts. As I watched you all in this meeting, I witnessed some people roll their eyes, sigh, and curse. Some people get angry and defensive for their actions and words. At the beginning of this week, when students expressed concerns and said they support the ordinance, they were asked if they were doing this for a project as it was brushed off. That is deplorable. We are doing this because it is simply the right thing to do, simply because everyone should have basic needs to live. You all have been given tons of funding, but yet put little towards the houseless community. That is unacceptable. They are just a part of our community as anyone else. Deserve basic human rights as well. Just because our conditions for the homeless or houseless, quote-unquote, is better than other communities, does not mean that is good. America as a whole needs to do a better job, and it needs to start here in Bloomington, because we have a really big houseless problem. I have lived in Bloomington for three years, and I have witnessed the houseless increasingly be discriminated against by police and pushed out of the community. The money that you put towards the police to displace the organi, to displace the houseless community can be put towards organizations, parks and, parks and resources to help the homeless. This is not a new issue, but you are treating it as if it is, because it affects the way Bloomington is marketed and looked at. This ordinance isn't divisive. You all are only, the only ones who seem divided from your community, telling, telling you to vote yes on this ordinance. People are more worried about the views from their pedestals instead of the real-life people that are hurting and need help. The negative effects people get from the homeless communities, being at this park is not wanting to see people, houseless people, because out of sight, out of mind. People, people are fighting for their lives while others are worried about the views from their backyard. The struggles don't even come close to being the same. So, so their inputs are not the same, out of sight, out of mind, like I said.
Ms. Daniels, could you finish up, please?
Yes. I urge you all to stop being selfish and think of someone other than yourselves. This ordinance is a start for a better respect and support for the houseless people. A denial of this is a denial of human rights. You all already done that by displacing this community and putting them in places and not letting them stay in parks. You villainize them and arrest them. You basically said the houseless community is not a part of our community, and that is not true. You were offered to help and create this ordinance. It did not show interest.
Ms. Daniel, not- Let me check your comments, please.
All right. I yield the rest of my time.
Ms. Daniel, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Basil Hensman.
Mr. Hensman, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm actually a girl. So, my name is Basil.
I'm sorry.
Fine. It's okay. Um, I did want to say thank you all for being here so late. This is my normal hours of being awake as a college student, but I know it's very late. I did want to voice my support for this ordinance. While I understand that, you know, it's, in an ideal world, we would want everyone off the streets and we wouldn't want anyone to have lack of access to resources. I do want to say that sometimes, for whatever reason, resources like housing, sanitation, access to like, resources to get jobs and help people out of homelessness can be out of reach for some. And I think that kind of just the bare minimum we can do to help homeless people is just let them stay. Because, you know, if there was anywhere else they could go, I'm sure they would. You know, no one wants to camp out in a freezing park in the snow, where, you know, they don't have access to heat. They don't have access to a bathroom. They don't have access to resources. That's not anyone's first venue of choice when they think of housing or just a place to lay their head. I just think that it's really the bare minimum that we can do, just to let them stay there until they can find someplace else where they can get adequate help. I yield the rest of my time, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Hensman. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Chris Johnston.
Welcome. Johnston, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
I thank you for letting me speak. I just kind of came on here because I was hearing about this. And I actually followed this for the majority of the time, essentially. But I guess I'll just try to eat my piece. I actually came from New York originally. I was homeless at one point in time, which kind of sucked a lot. Considering that we weren't city homeless, so it was more of the country. We actually had to go outside and kill for food just to live. And coming up here was probably the best thing in my life, because I was given the opportunity by one person to live in the house again. And now I'm in IU studying intelligent systems engineering, which is crazy. I've talked to homeless people in Bedford. I'm actually best friends with one. She is currently a meth addict. She has no hope. But I remember asking her what she would want to do if she had a second chance. And her thought was that she wanted to study writing and become a novelist. And I thought that was amazing. All of this stems down to is, people need somewhere to start. And having nowhere to live is kind of huge for them. For, if I were, if I went to a shelter instead of going with one person, I would have actually been worse for myself. It wouldn't have helped me at all. I'm hugely against big crowds, and that just wouldn't work. I've noticed that homeless people that are forced to live together tend not to adapt back into society. They have to be like motivated to move up inside. And this isn't about that. This is just about sleeping outside. But as a first step, this would probably be the best thing to do, just for the time being, for until after winter's over. And from there, I yield my time. Thank you.
Mr. Johnston, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Zikra Fashir.
Welcome.
It's Zikra Fasher.
Fasher, I apologize. So, you have three minutes. Please go ahead, Ms. Fasher.
Hi, I am an IU student, and I'm also an organizer. And I also work at Friends Place. And I'm not speaking for Beacon. I'm speaking for myself when I say that. This meeting was probably one of the most disappointing things I've listened to in a really, really long time, because this is something that is so basic. One of the most basic things we can provide for people, which is sleep, housing, food, things like that. And to have people who come from the most privileged places in society, sit here and converse and try to joke about the lives of people, knowing that one person in our community just passed away, is disgusting, absolutely disgusting. And also knowing how the system works, you know, also seeing how the shelter systems work. I am very aware of rampant bias. I mean, we talk about racism, homophobia, transphobia. People are uncomfortable. They're uncomfortable. You know, and there's only so much we can do to make spaces as comfortable as possible. And with COVID happening, we don't have that many beds. We don't have that many spaces. And so, for you guys to also try to put the reliance on the shelter system, knowing we're already overburdened, is also shameful. And also continuously going back to winter shelter, when you knowingly did not even fund it. That was completely the community. The same people here in this, in this chat that are talking about this are the same people who funded the winter shelter. So, it's, it's ironic that you guys are falling back on the mechanisms that we have literally built in this system. These are not, these, it's just, it's shameful. It honestly is shameful. And we need to be doing better. We should not be having these discussions. We should be moving forward. We shouldn't have, these people should be housed by now. I mean, we're talking about kins or flats. Where, why is that, you know? People should already be in their homes. This should already, these things should already have happened. We should not be dealing with this. To, so to sit here and discuss this most basic thing. It's like, we need to be doing better. And you need to take a deep look at yourselves, truly, after this conversation. When you go to bed tonight in your warm bed, and you start questioning, you make the decisions of people who can't make those decisions for themselves. In your, you know, heated place, when you can shower and with warm water, you know, take a look at yourselves and think about that privilege that you have that you don't even think about when you step into your homes.
Ms. Fasher, your time is about up. If you could wrap up your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Fasher. Mr. Lucas? Mr. Lucas, you're muted.
Next up is Chase Hadley.
Mr. Hadley, welcome. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chase Hadley. I don't have any words necessarily prepared. I just wanted to share off the top of my head. I am an IU student, and I have lived in Bloomington. I've been a Bloomington resident for about five years now. Lived in different districts. I'm currently in District Two under Sue here. As one of your constituents, I just wanted to share that my experience moving to Bloomington was originally, yes, to come to IU, but I was actually evicted from my apartment, thanks to my mom leaving back in my hometown of Noblesville. And I was forced to come down here without necessarily a place to stay. Fortunately for me, I knew somebody whose mother, without knowing me, let me stay with her until I was able to find a place of my own. But many people do not have that opportunity. I think it's important to realize that these are people too. Obviously, these are our neighbors. They live in the community. You are representing them as well. I am an outdoor recreation major. I work in parks. Parks and Recreation is where I'm intending to go. I often lead trips where we sleep in tents, and that is the bare minimum that is shelter, regardless of whether or not they are allowed, people are allowed to have their tents in the parks. People will be sleeping outside regardless. If they do not want to or they cannot sleep in a shelter, they are going to find somewhere else to sleep regardless. So, just allowing them to have the tents and the heaters is the bare necessities that could keep them alive. We've already seen instances of this happening, where, you know, somebody slept in the park without their belongings that they had that could have kept them alive. That simple tent can keep them sheltered from the rain that was happening, you know, Christmas Eve night. That, you know, increases the likelihood of hypothermia, as well as heaters. Just anything that can keep somebody alive through the night. It's not, I don't see why it's that big of a deal. It's six-hour time period where people are going to be sleeping for the most part. How often are there really going to be calls or issues over the night? I just, I urge you to consider voting yes on this. And I yield the rest of my time.
Mr. Hadley, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Maria.
Maria, could you state your full name? Welcome. And you'll have three minutes.
Hello, yes, my name is Maria Bashbekov. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, all. Thank you. Hi, all. My name is Maria Bashbekov, and I am a student at Indiana University. First off, I want to thank everyone for taking their morning to be part of this call. I'm speaking in hopes of encouraging your support with Ordinance Twenty-One-O-Six. I'd like to think that after well over twelve hours' worth of discussing this ordinance, we've all been able to give it a lot of thought. Homelessness has been an extensive problem in our town, like in many parts of the world. But unlike other parts of the world, we are criminalizing these struggling individuals as opposed to helping them out. And I truly don't understand why. I've yet to see a justified explanation. Similarly, I believe I've been facing an issue and seeing only one solution offered. This is thus the solution we must pursue. If you oppose Ordinance Twenty-One-O-Six, provide another solution. Take some other action to show that you care about the homeless population and aren't just brushing them aside. From our council members who are opposing this ordinance, I perceive a lack of compassion and problem-solving abilities. There are plenty of examples from around the world which provide insight regarding how to address such an issue. Housing Fursuita is which, is one such program. This is similar to that moment when you're walking down the street and you avoid eyeing contact with someone in the street who may be begging or even homeless. That is what we are doing right now. But on the other hand, if you believe that this is an issue of homelessness, homelessness, please address the problem that you do see at hand and help our fellow Bloomingtonians. We can't simply look at people struggling to survive in our beloved city of Bloomington and choose to flounder instead. We must utilize our abilities to band together and address the issue. This must be a group effort and not divided one. From, from the outcry I have seen, it is unbelievably clear that most citizens in Bloomington support this ordinance, and I hope that you do too. Thank you. I yield my time.
Ms. Bashkov, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
I believe those are all of the comments from folks who haven't already commented. If I've missed anyone, let me know. I, I know some came, some requests came in over the chat. I think I've gotten to everyone. I think I see one request. Dan Combs should now be able to unmute.
Mr. Combs, welcome. Please go ahead.
Thank you for hearing the ordinance and thank you for staying around to listen to all the comments. There's just a certain irony in this. Obviously, I support the ordinance. But the irony is that every year at graduation, we bring in hopefully A-listers to talk to graduating students and tell them about life after college. And our message to them is always be ready to fail. Be ready to fail, but don't let failure define you. Go at it again and go at it again. If you don't vote for this ordinance, then we need to tell those students we're lying to them. Because we are not living up to our own rhetoric on the matter. And we just don't get any, Homer Simpson said, trying is the first step toward failure. But if we don't try, we will never resolve it. And at what point then will we begin to try? Thank you. That's all I have to say. It's much too late.
Mr. Combs, thank you. Lucas?
I believe that's it.
I'll treat this as a second call. Any additional comment via chat? Final call? Mr. Lucas, anything?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you. And again, thank you to everyone for your patience and for your passion around this issue. I do want to acknowledge the lateness of the hour. I also want to acknowledge that we have colleagues with amendments that have been proposed as well. And I'd like to see what the will of the council is going forward. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I'd like to move to postpone ordinance 2106 to the council regular session scheduled for April 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional detail you want to provide, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, for some of the reasons discussed earlier this evening, A, I feel like it's, I feel like we would be best served by having all nine members of the council available to vote on this issue. I think it's probably far too late for debate and further questions, let alone bringing amendments that I think are complex and substantive and have real trade offs that deserve vetting with input from administration, community members, people experiencing homelessness, other stakeholders, as I voiced earlier this evening. The reason I picked April 7th and not the next regular session on March 17th is because March 31st this month is actually a fifth Wednesday where we don't typically schedule meetings. We could, of course, I think at the president's initiative, schedule the committee of the whole meeting next week or something like that to consider amendments. But because the 31st is available, a special session may work. We heard from Reverend Gilmore earlier that in his conversations with Ms. Predmore from the chamber, they are trying to work together to find compromises. And I know others in the community are as well as are the ordinance sponsors. So I think this is an issue that deserves continued work and deserves all nine members to vote on it. And yeah, for all those reasons, I think that's why I made the motion. Thanks.
And can you restate the motion just for clarity?
Sure. I moved to postpone ordinance 2106 to the council regular session scheduled for April 7.
And there was a second, I thought I heard. Councilmember Volan, thank you. Additional discussion? Councilmember Volan?
Just going to point out that if we do not pass this motion, we will absolutely break the record for the longest council meeting in the tenure of any member of council currently preserving. The longest meetings I've ever attended were just over seven hours long. We've just broken that. If we vote tonight, that's going to have to be council debate. And I, for one, am not going to give up my right to speak to this issue as I have many times before in the name of lateness. That it was in the control of the majority to have not put us through this seven hour meeting. We could have broken it up over time. And I just, I am very disappointed that we made this choice. So I urge postponement. At the very least, we can all get some sleep and continue this important conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Sandberg?
As I hope to redirect this effort to a completely different line of thinking with a better collaboration. I'm not inclined to drag this out any further. There's been a lot made of our colleague not being with us tonight. And I think some of that characterization has been unfair that, that we are, you know, somehow leaving him out. Again, I just don't see the benefit of continuing to work on this particular ordinance that I've made clear. I find to be flawed to the point that I want to start from the beginning. And so letting this sit for another month, I frankly don't think is going to be productive or helpful in getting us to a better place.
Thank you. Additional comment? The nun, shall we move to a vote? Madam Clerk, are you still with us? Welcome back. So we have a motion to postpone further discussion of ordinance 2106 to April 7. I believe you said, correct? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, and we're starting with Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Scambolory?
No.
Okay.
And that fails for four. Which brings us to the amendments.
I move to introduce amendment one, ordinance 2106.
And that's by title and synopsis?
We don't. There's a second.
Second from Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I believe it was Councilmember Rosenbarger, but yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. And was that a motion to introduce by title and synopsis?
We don't typically read the title and synopsis of an amendment. I don't believe. We just introduce amendments and present and discuss.
Let's move toward that. Councilmember Flaherty, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes, I can present as our counsel attorney able to display the amendment. I'm not sure Mr. Lucas is available.
Mr. Lucas? Or do you have the ability to screen, Mr. Flaherty?
Probably.
Digger or Piedmont Smith?
Yes, just give me a minute if we don't hear from Mr. Lucas. Let's see.
Mr. Lucas, have you been able to rejoin us? Yeah, it sounds like, oh, there we go.
Is this, okay, am I successfully sharing?
You are. You might want to make that a little bit larger.
Okay. Yeah. So this is amendment one to ordinance 2106. As I suggested earlier this evening, and as Councilmember Rosenbarger did as well, we as sponsors have some mixed feelings about this amendment. Obviously, it was not something we chose to include in our draft of the ordinance. But knowing that having some procedural protections and, and and property protections and other types of protections in place for our unhoused residents in Bloomington, we thought it was still worthy of discussion. So I will first visit the synopsis, actually, as a description. This went out in the packet addendum this afternoon for anyone who has not yet seen it, members of the public. So as you all are aware, prior to displacing individuals from public space.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I believe maybe we have someone unmuted. Okay. So sorry, thrown off. The ordinance as drafted in its original form would require the availability of permanent or transitional housing prior to the city being able to take action via prescribed procedures to displace people from public space who otherwise were unable or unwilling to go to shelter or unhoused. This amendment expands the number of options available to the city to offer to people prior to displacing them. So in particular, it adds shelter space to that. And I'll move up to the text of the amendment here. The relevant sections of section 30 are amended as follows. So instead of just permanent and transitional housing, it now says are offered available permanent housing, transitional housing, or other shelter space, reasonable assistance and transportation to housing or shelter options. It also makes clear that any shelter space offered must be available to the individual person to be displaced from the camp. That's noting that the actual individual will need to be welcome at that shelter space. In other words, if they are prohibited from that available shelter space, that would not qualify. Or if it's a shelter space reserved only for a man and the person to be displaced is a woman, that wouldn't qualify, et cetera. Let's see, section D is updated as well to clarify that housing or shelter options being available would allow the city to move forward. And then I'll just read the definition of shelter space. Shelter space means an accommodation where residents are offered free of charge, a place to sleep that is secure, afford some protection from the elements and has access to basic hygiene facilities. Shelter space may include shelters operated by members of the Region 10 Continuum of Care Board, temporary hotel shelter, or other shelters that the city finds to meet the conditions of this chapter. Shelter space offered by a religiously affiliated organization may meet this definition, but only if the shelter space is offered to residents without discrimination on the basis of race, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or religion, and is offered without a requirement that the residents engage in religious activities or submit to religious messaging. So I'll also just note in summary that this more closely matches the updated ordinance and city code that Indianapolis, just a week and a half ago, has amended their code. So they included shelter space in a similar way as they updated their five-year-old ordinance on this matter. I think that mostly covers the substance of the amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll also stop sharing my screen.
You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Still sorry. Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. And we could always put that back up if needed. So questions for the sponsors?
I guess it would also be appropriate to ask the administration if they have a reaction to the amendment.
Thank you for that reminder. Members of the administration? Ms. Guthrie, please go ahead. Please unmute.
Yes, thank you. This does expand the available housing that can be counted for purposes of this ordinance, but it doesn't change our opinion that it doesn't make this ordinance acceptable because we will still end up with people camping in our parks and we will have to create all the structure that Ms. McDavid talked about. So we do not support this amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Ms. Guthrie said. She said that the city would still have to create the camps, a camp in our parks like Paula McDavid described. The ordinance does not require the city to do that. The ordinance allows the city to designate a space, but it does not require it. So.
That's correct. But if we don't designate a space, then camping can happen in all the parks. So it's a bit of a choice for the city.
Right. But this amendment would make it less likely that, or more like, it would make it more likely that people who are currently camping would find a place to spend the night that's not in the parks.
Well, I guess that's to be seen. There's been a lot of talk tonight about how there aren't enough shelter beds. So it's hard to tell.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Piedmont Smith. Additional questions for the sponsors or for staff? Second call? And final call?
I actually have one.
Yes, Ms. Piedmont Smith, please go ahead.
If the if somebody in a shelter was experiencing discrimination based on their sexual orientation, could that go to the Human Rights Commission of the city of Bloomington? There's a question from Ms. Guthrie.
Yes. Anybody experiencing discrimination in the city?
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Additional discussion or comment? Oh, no. My fault. Sorry. Mr. Lucas, thank you. Members of the public, this is an opportunity to comment on amendment one to ordinance 2106. If you would, please use the raise hand function or enter into chat your interest in commenting. Mr. Lucas will be monitoring both. If there are more than one individual, if there are more than multiple individuals on your particular device, please let us know that as well. So Mr. Lucas, comments?
First, I believe I saw Alex Goodland.
Mr. Goodland, welcome. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, so I guess I, I would rather it not come down to this amendment. I mean, but I guess too little, too late for that. If it means that we're going to get one more vote for this ordinance in this meeting, then not, then I guess this amendment is fine. Or not. It's not fine at all. Who am I kidding? But I guess it would be better than not, which like, and that's what, that's what we need to think about. We need to think about, because obviously we're not going to solve the problems. We're, we're putting Band-Aids on to stop the bleeding. And I mean, even, even so much as like that, I mean, this gives, you know, very reasonable exceptions, I would say, if there is literally nothing at all, like that's what this ordinance like that's what this ordinance says, then, then they, you know, have to be allowed to camp. And I think that that's, that's one reasonable thing. I don't think that they should be forced at all. And I don't see how, like, it's, it's just crazy how Felipe is misinterpreting this ordinance. And then Pete Monch Smith is saying like, but, you know, this ordinance doesn't actually burn the city with anything. They can choose to do something or not do something, and it's, they're leaving it to the nonprofits anyway. And I mean, really, the city is burdened either way with enforcing and paying to kick those people out. So there's the money there, but it seems like there isn't the money for helping them. Whenever there's money to help them, it's not there, and there's excuses for it. Whenever there is money to enforce it and kick them out, then that's not an issue. So I don't know, I'm willing to have a discussion, you know, you've gotten my comments before, but it's, this isn't right now a very good one. And I hope that this discussion gets better. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodland. Before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Flaherty, may I ask you to take the gavel temporarily, please?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lucas, please go ahead.
Next up, I believe we have Black Lives V-Town. I think that's Jada B., who should now be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please say your name for the record, and you have three minutes, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jada B., I am calling on behalf of Black Lives Matter Bloomington, and it's a shame, I'm sure Sue Scambler is probably going to the bathroom, given that it is now, you know, what, hour nine of this ridiculous meeting by the city council. Several of you city council members are actively, we see what you're doing. It's pretty freaking obvious what you're doing, okay? You're trying to kill this ordinance in any shape, way, or form with no solution. You have nothing, you have nothing in place to even try to come up with some sort of solution for our unhoused family in this community. And you continue to say that you care and you continue to get upset about being characterized and demonized, but the reality is, we are calling things as we see them. When you act in a racist and classist way, you get called a racist and a classist. And that is exactly what you are doing, not to mention the fact, Mr. Rallo, that it is not your place to decide whether or not you are racist or not. It is, it is my responsibility to assess your, what your actions and your words, and see whether or not you are racist, because I'm the one being harmed by your actions. And in particular, with this ordinance, the community who is being affected by it are telling you that they need this ordinance in order to live and survive, and you're saying they don't get to judge that. We have to talk to the businesses. We spend so much time focusing on businesses, you would think that this town was run by Republicans and not by Democrats. So much of what's happening in this call right here is insane. And if we were living in another town, a more democratic town, everything that Sue Scambler, Ron Smith, Susan Sandberg, and Dave Rallo has been saying tonight will be characterized as Republican talking points. So I ask you to resign from the Democratic Party, and I'm going to send a letter and hopefully get others in BL and V-Town to send a letter asking for your resignation from the Democratic Party of Bloomington, because you're not acting like Democrats at all, on any level, and not progressive Democrats like many of you claim to be. So why don't you just step aside and let the rest of us who actually know what we're talking about do this work?
Just pause this vote.
I also want to specifically state, leaving Jim Sims out of this vote is racist. You're leaving the only black member of the city council out of this entire discussion, someone who has particular and special knowledge about the subject at hand. That is the very definition of white silencing. That is the very definition of racism.
Ms. B., that's your time.
One second, one second, let me finish it. That is the very definition of white silencing, and that is the very definition of white fragility. And you keep showing it over and over and over again, when you only have one black council member, and you're not allowing him to fully participate in this conversation. Matt Flaherty had the right idea to push this vote off until he could be a part of the conversation.
Ms. B., thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Ms. B. Mr. Lucas, Mr. Flaherty, thank you for taking the gavel, Mr. Lucas, who's next, please?
Next up is Nicole Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, welcome, please go ahead.
Hi. Well, concerning this particular issue, I began to highlight that in my earlier comments. And honestly, I really want to say here, these amendments cumulatively make this ordinance performative and actually legalizes the response back in December, or January, that it was drafted in response to, to change, and it forces people to go to Wheeler. This isn't even a compromise where no one wins. The city ends up justified and legalizes the actions that it took. Now, this is the biggest question this leaves me with. Does this now, if this, if this ordinance passes with these amendments, does this now set them all up to be jailed if they decide not to go to Wheeler? That being said, I'm going to also say that someone that's from the city talked forever about how much this was going to cost the city. Why would it ever be that way? Fences, wow, a light pole for security? You mean cameras? Sounds like Biden's camps for immigrants. I mean, you guys are envisioning this way too much, you're like overworking it. It's literally allowing people the right to sleep on public property and not go to jail. That's all we're asking for. Anything you decide to do over that is of your own accord. Remember that. Thank you very much, and I yield my time.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Renee Miller.
Ms. Miller, welcome, please go ahead.
What day is this? Is this Thursday, the 4th?
It is now.
I want to make sure to make note of that when I'm talking to my attorney, because we've already discussed this time and time again. It has already been decided by the Supreme Court that criminalizing homelessness, sleeping in public, is brutally against the law. So I will be talking with an attorney, and I've got money, I can pay them. Just not, maybe not as much as the city, but I'm sure I can also get some people to help me pay even more. So that's my intent. So we'll be seeing you in court, and we'll decide it there. If you can't find any heart to at least find a place for people to sleep, to sleep. You guys have all excused yourselves several times, maybe not all of you, but several of you have, to go use your bathrooms in your homes. You've checked your messages, you've done all this stuff that you can do in your homes, while other people are out in the cold. And they could be intense, they could be warm and tense with heaters. It's no longer 10 degrees outside, so it can be done, it could be done safely until some other options are available to them. So, I don't know, I just don't even know what else to say to you people, you know? I'm just so highly disappointed. I voted when I was in a different district. I voted for one that I really was hoping that might change her mind, and I haven't seen it yet tonight. Now I'm in a different district, and I'm a little bit more hopeful. And, you know, we're just going to unseat the ones that have no progressive values at all. We absolutely are going to unseat you. And as far as the behavior of a couple of the boys at the table tonight, acting so rudely to some other council people, shame on you, grow up. You know, save that schoolyard talk when you're not anywhere near a microphone. That is ridiculous, and just absolutely ridiculous, and we'll be using that also with our attorneys. Thank you, I yield my time.
Ms. Miller, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Danielle Bird.
Ms. Bird, welcome, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Danielle Bird. Thank you. First of all, for those who refuse to allow additional discussion on this issue, I'm so deeply disappointed. It's 2:04 in the morning, we've had, this is a seven-and-a-half-hour meeting. People have given up and gone to bed. And this is an important issue. You've all recognized that there's been a lot of interest in this, a lot of people commenting on it. And here we are, you can't delay it because you just want to kill it. And I am just, that shows me where your priorities lie. I can't hear you say anymore that you care when you will not continue this discussion. So I hope people remember this on election. I'm not thrilled with this amendment at all. It removes the agency that individuals should have. We can't force people to go to a religious shelter as their only option. Otherwise, we're going to say it's illegal for you to sleep outside. That is a forced, that isn't a choice, it's not even a choice. I agree with Nicole Johnson, this becomes performative at this point with this amendment. It does not accomplish what, what we needed to accomplish. So, and the arguments I've heard tonight against this are all red herrings. I mean, this is so exaggerated, to the point where it's, I mean, everybody sees that. You're not creating a social service organization because a few people need to sleep outdoors without getting arrested. So I'm disgusted, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Kathy Crabtree.
Ms. Crabtree, welcome, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm just going to echo what everyone else has said. And particularly what Jada said, I want to amplify what she said because she was so spot on. But I also was just thinking that all of this basically is because of a park rule. So if you don't want to create this ordinance, how about you just change a frickin' park regulation so that it won't be trespassing at all, and allow folks to sleep in the park? I'm, just like everyone else, that I just want to echo, and this is not demonizing, this is just saying how extremely disappointed and disgusted I am at the fact that you won't allow this to be deliberated further. And you can call it what you want, but it's a sneaky move to do this while Jim Sims is not here to at least get to weigh in on it. And like Jada and others have said, when he's the only person of color on this council, and this is being done, that's racist, pure and simple. So it's, I can't say that I've ever been more disappointed with the city of Bloomington. So anyway, I don't even know what to say about this amendment, thank you.
Ms. Crabtree, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Tina Honeycutt.
Ms. Honeycutt, welcome, please go ahead.
I'm trying to make sure, all other devices are muted, I'm afraid that we're going to get feedback, so. I'm Tina Honeycutt. You've heard lots of comments from me in the previous weeks and this evening, now morning. I want to reiterate that part of what is so frustrating here is the fact that you've dug your heels in and are unable to have further discussion and are unwilling. Now you're listening, sort of, but not really. You've already made up your minds, and you're pushing through to make sure that there's not further discussion on this past, you know, however far into the morning the debate goes. When we're talking about something that could be solved in different ways if you had taken action earlier. And when we talk about, when we hear others talk about President Sims not being here this evening, there's no implication that that would have made it pass, but it would have had a different discussion. And there really is no reason that you couldn't have waited and continued other than wanting to just get it over with so that you could start fresh. Well, starting fresh is not what you're going to get because all of us remember these discussions that we've been having. We are watching all of the things you're doing. And the strangest thing that the city is against this amendment, when really it does kind of just make it, modifies the way they handled the homeless encampments previously. They would just tell us that there were plenty of beds and that people couldn't camp, and it would be perfectly within the ordinance. So what I hear, and part of the reason the ordinance even came up, I think, is the city's unwillingness to handle this really difficult.
Ms. Honeycutt, that's your time, if you could wrap up your comments.
You know, we're in this very specific space with a small number of people. The bigger problem where you're working on the longer-term situations, anyway, I'm not even making sense. I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Honeycutt, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Reverend Forrest Gilmore.
Reverend Gilmore, please go ahead.
I, I'm not in love with this amendment, but again, if it gets us closer to an agreement, I think it's worthwhile, certainly closer to the laws spelled out in the Martin versus Harris versus Boise decision. So it fits more in keeping with the way the law is described in that, in that court decision. So it might be more amenable to this. I just, I know that some of you are trying to, for whatever reason, vote this down tonight as opposed to letting it extend, but I, again, I want to reflect that this issue's not going to go away. The criminalization of homelessness is not going to go away. In a few short months, the winter shelter will have to close, and we'll have a lot of people sleeping outside. And, and as well as other issues of things that are closing also around that time and over the next several months that have expanded up because of COVID. So this issue isn't going to go away, and I'm really worried that what we're trying, we're doing here right now is trying to put ourselves in a position where, where we're, in essence, forcing or daring people in poverty to sue the city. And I just don't like that, I just don't like that this is the position we're in. And that by not trying to be creative in addressing the constitutional violation of arresting people for sleeping in any kind of serious way is deeply concerning to me. And I know a lot of you, I know you do care. And so that's why I'm befuddled by our inability to really engage in serious dialogue about that fundamental problem of arresting people for sleeping. It's a fundamental problem, and it's not going to go away. It's a fundamental problem and it's not gonna go away. So please, I beg of you, let's have a serious conversation because I don't want this to get worse. I don't want this to get more divisive, and I, and I fear that it will if we, if we try to sweep it under the rug like we're doing potentially tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Gilmore. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Emily Pike.
Ms. Pike, welcome. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you all for staying up so late to talk about this important issue. I'm frankly not wild for this amendment. But it does seem to be a middle ground, and it does seem to address a lot of the concerns that, that I've heard about this. Frankly, people being very concerned about the safety of people sleeping outdoors, which is a really valid concern and one that I share. So, well, it wouldn't be probably my first preference. I do think it makes sense, and I do think it's certainly worth considering. Secondly, if it's not something that this council feels like it can adopt right now, it does certainly feel worthwhile to put some real time and energy into a solution that this council does think would work. And I think really that's, that's what I have to say about it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Kai Freeman.
Ms. Freeman, please go ahead.
Hello, I'm again, I, IU student here, and I've been on the call since 6:30, so thank you all for staying up. And I want to thank everyone else for staying up as well for this conversation. Want to speak to a point that was made earlier in regards of clinging to partisanship in this type of argument that, that we're having here, is that that very idea i- is fundamentally flawed. Because the issue that we're facing is not Republican nor Democrat. It is truly an issue of morality. And that is what we truly have to talk about. I too would share the same sentiment that I'm not crazy over the amendment. But I also share the same fear that regardless of any amendment that is passed for this legislation, that some of your minds still will not change. And I know that many of my peers and students reached out, sent emails to every representative. And again, I, I thank you, Sue, for responding to me. But I, I want to say that there's so much more that we could be doing on this issue. And I think that we've seen a lot of outpour from the community, and not just Bloomington residents, but students of the university as well. And that is something that's profound to acknowledge here as well, is that we have to understand that the people who are still sitting up on this call, voicing support for this, are here and showing out more than the people who we are trying to defend in these arguments of, of not being here. But their arguments are still afforded the liberty of, of running rampant in all of these conversations. And that, in a sense, is problematic because to me, I cared enough to stay here from 6:30 to 2:16, just like you all did. And I am a college student. I will throw that out there. This next generation of leaders are watching every single step and every single move that you all are making. And I want to believe that you will make the right step that is going to value human life and human existence in all spaces in Bloomington. Because this progressive haven that I was painted is starting to show its brute and ugly face. And I do not believe that is what Bloomington can be, and I believe that we all can do better. In a sense, and especially passing this ordinance, and if this amendment is the vehicle to achieving that, I will agree with it. However, I do believe it does take away some of the autonomy that people who have never been provided the power and authority, like I've said before, have been granted. So thank you so much.
Mr. Freeman, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Patrick Saling.
Mr. Saling, welcome. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Nico Rocha, actually. No worries. So the, to speak on the amendment, and I would echo some of the sentiments that I, I don't, it's, it's official to helping unhoused folks. With that being said, if it's what convinces you all to vote to pass it, I, I support that. With that being said, as council members, certain council members have tried to push and rush the voting of this ordinance. You have made it clear that you are just trying to shove this issue under the rug. And I just want you all to know that this won't be the last that you hear about this issue. As the caring and the passionate speakers who have, who have remained to discuss this issue have made it clear and evident. We won't be silenced on this issue and yeah, that you're gonna continue to, to hear us to speak on this. I think there's one other comment.
Yeah, so.
Please state your name for the record.
All right, this is Patrick Saling.
Mr. Saling, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think I wanted to begin by asking a question to you, Sue Scambrelli. If you recall the meeting that we had with the BHC where you came to meet us at Switchyard Park. I'm home now. I'm no longer at Switchyard, so I was able to find my notes from that meeting. And I, I would love to get together soon to compare notes. But I think, and we've, we've discussed ad nauseam, so I'll keep it simple. My notes are simple. Yours are more complex. But I have at the top, Sue Scambrelli. Woo! And then under that directly is Josh, and simply place to stay. And then after that, we heard from other speakers, we had Trevor, who said he had two jobs and five caseworkers, who's doing everything that we say are the solutions, and he was still homeless. We had Tracy, who had her child and had to wait five months for housing. And then shortly after receiving it, then was removed and was separated from her child, where then both of them spent three months without housing. And we have other names here of other folks fighting to pain inflicted upon them here in Bloomington. But I think we had in this meeting a moment of power and beauty. And so I hope that you collect that power and beauty, and I hope that we could continue to get together. With that, I yield my time.
Mr. Saling, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jacob Schwartz.
Yeah, and I, I wrote something out this time, so I'm not as liable to blow up. And I'd just like to echo earlier statements. And for the four members who were considering voting against this and who have on multiple occasions voted against moving this towards a time where Council President Sims could actually be involved in this decision, I would not just ask that you resign from the Democratic Party. I would ask that you resign from the city council. Because you don't represent my values, and you decided it's better to use city time and resources to police and brutalize the unhoused community instead of helping them. You don't represent my values, and you prioritize a $250,000 armored vehicle for Bloomington Police Department, and then quibble about the cost of helping the most vulnerable population. And finally, you don't represent me, and you prioritize the comforts and wants of the wealthy over the needs of the rest of us. If you fail to pass this ordinance, if you fail our city, if you fail our constituents, I swear I will put as much effort into unseating you in 2023 as is needed. Ron, I want to target you specifically because you are my representative on this council. You won by 336 votes in 2019. Others were closer. And that is not a very wide margin of error. If you expect to keep your seat in 2023, I would encourage you to pass this ordinance because money from those wealthy elites who last week, let's be frank, that was almost a bribe that they were offering with, oh, we employ tens of thousands of people and we make all these donations to nonprofits. Money will get you far, they'll get you a fair way in politics. But a pissed off populace will beat that every time I yield my time.
Mr. Schwartz, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Last is Martin Law.
Mr. Law, welcome. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Martin Law. I would encourage you to, I suppose, you know, accept this amendment on the path to approving this ordinance. This amendment, you know, whatever its merits are, do not keep the ordinance from achieving its goal, which is to make, to, excuse me, to make it legal for unhoused people to sleep. That is the goal of the ordinance. That's the problem the ordinance is attempting to solve. This amendment does nothing to, to, to harm that goal. So I still think that this, I think with this amendment, I think this ordinance is, is still the right solution to the problem it is seeking to solve. I'd also like to echo disappointment that, that, that part of my representation is not being heard. The absence of the only black city council member is notable. As, as a black member of the Bloomington community, we are in a minority here. We are often not listened to. And to have our representative not able to weigh in on this, you know, it doesn't feel good. So I encourage you to, to
Where's the video?
Accept this amendment and also pass the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Mr. Law, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Believe that's it.
Okay, second call. And final call. With that, let's come back to council. Seeing none, well, let's come back to council for additional questions. Seeing none, let's come to council, let's stay with council for a final comment on Amendment 01. Councilmember Volan.
I'm not a fan of this amendment, and I would prefer not to vote for it. I am going to vote for it in the hopes that it might make ordinance, the ordinance more palatable, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the members of the public who spoke on the, on the amendment, which again, addresses pretty directly a lot of the concern and criticism we've heard from other members, members of the public and from the administration. As I noted, and as Councilmember Volan just noted, and as a lot of members of the public just noted, we're not wild about this amendment. I, I think it, it does undermine the rights and dignity of our, of our unhoused residents to some extent. And I think we will face many of the similar problems we have in recent months where, where folks will simply refuse to go to shelters if, if it's a shelter that they find particularly problematic for various reasons, and, and will probably still end up with folks sleeping outdoors in a similar way that we have right now. You know, who wouldn't be allowed to do so in that case. So I'm not, I'm not wild about this. That said, getting procedural protections and property protections and some explicit guidance on, on all of that and notice, I think is still a step forward. So I would support the amendment if, if it would get five votes and would convince a fifth member to support the ordinance as amended. Based on how the meeting has gone, I, I sort of doubt that's the case. So I guess I'll just put it to my four colleagues who have been generally opposed to this ordinance. If, if this amendment is meaningful to you in finding a middle ground, please speak up and, and say so. If, if you choose not to and, and or you're opposed, I will probably be inclined not to vote for the amendment because if it's, if it's not gonna do anything, I might as well stick with what I think is best. Just a final note, I guess there's been a lot of calls for, you know, and I've heard this from colleagues, and I've heard this from members of the public, like a, a path forward or a, a different approach that can get everybody on board. And I'm just really struggling to see what that would look like if it doesn't involve some sort of compromise like this. Do, do we really think that we are going to get the chamber and the BEC and downtown Bloomington and, you know, some funders and providers in a room and, and come up with a solution regarding people who have no other option? You know, no shelter option available to them and who are sleeping outdoors. Do we think we're gonna find up a, a solution that they find palatable? Is that bringing everyone along? I just, I, you know, we're, we're, we're seeking to compromise. We're trying to find middle ground. And I, and I, the, the kind of, it, it feels like an unwillingness to, to, to meet us there, I guess. And I don't mean that to be disparaging or, or critical. It's just what it feels like. So anyway, if anybody plans to support it among the members who were inclined to vote no previously, please, please do speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rallo?
I really wasn't going to speak to this, but I think that Councilmember Flaherty is owed a response. I would agree with Philippa Guthrie that the fundamental flaw here is in the creation of homeless camps throughout city parks as some kind of antidote or some Band-Aid or some means by which we address the homeless population is, I think, flawed. And it's, it hasn't been fully thought through. And so it, it, it is, that's why I say that this ordinance is really irredeemable at this point. And so this amendment doesn't address it. And, you know, thank you for trying. But I think that this is the fundamental problem here. Resources should be spent for shelter for people not to facilitate sleeping outdoors, which we see already has led to a fatality. So that's why I oppose this ordinance in the amendment.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Once again, the ordinance does not require the city to set aside any property specifically for people experiencing homelessness to camp. It gives the option. The option includes all public property, not just parks. The, the ordinance, the main thrust of the ordinance is to make it legal for people who have no other place to go to sleep on public property. The camps are optional. So I just want to reiterate that because that seems to be repeatedly misunderstood. With that, I, I want to, I just agree with Councilmember Flaherty in that I do not really like this amendment. I think we need more housing, not more shelter beds. And I have a big hesitation in including Wheeler Mission as an option because of, many people don't feel comfortable there due to discriminatory practices or, or feedback they've, they've got. So, so as, as Councilmember Flaherty said, I, I hope I will hear from the three other council members who have been opposed to the ordinance to let us know whether this amendment would make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
I still oppose the ordinance and this amendment. It's not gonna make a difference. It's, there's, there, it is a fundamentally flawed piece of legislation. And what was just mentioned gave me this thought that if there was the funds that were created or had to be allocated to have an infrastructure for people that the city would end up being liable, liable for. Yeah, I would, I would vote for the, them having it for shelter, not, not so that they could sleep in the park. And I'm sorry for that. And I honestly feel that
feel that homelessness is a tragedy and and it's incredibly difficult, and I do want to seek a path forward. And I certainly will be looking to ask more questions, to do some more research and to think about this and to with some of the folks that United Way and in the Region 10. I'm fully behind that idea of let's make it better, but I can't support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
And just briefly, this amendment does not cause me to want to support the ordinance. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rallo?
Just to say, I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comment because it shows a fundamental difference that I think many of us have, and that is I cannot ignore the city's role in a in a homeless encampment within a public park. That means that ethically and practically, we have a responsibility. And that means so we it's not just a matter of ignoring a homeless encampment throughout public parks. So that's, I think, really getting to the the heart of the matter, which is we have fundamentally different views on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Um, just to mention that people will most probably continue to sleep in our parks, but they will be hidden and inaccessible to social service agencies. So whether or not we officially take responsibility, you know, according to Councilmember Rallo's reasoning, that anybody who sleeps in a park is the city's responsibility. Well, that's going to happen anyway, even without this ordinance.
Thank you. Additional comments? If not, I'll try and chime in. Seeing none, I'll jump in. In short, this doesn't change my thinking on the ordinance. My hope is that people won't stop listening now that I've said that. What's been striking to me about this conversation is that I think I didn't keep count, but it sounds like at least a half a dozen people said, I really don't like this amendment. And I understand why it was proposed. It was proposed to generate to to kind of probe the the possibility of additional support. But we have many members of the community that would be served who have said they don't like this amendment. That for me underscores the limitations of trying to do everything around 2106. If all if the only options we're allowing ourselves are amending this particular piece of legislation, I don't think we'll find our way to a productive solution. We'll wind up with amendments that people don't like. And I'm particular and this discussion has actually kind of brought that into specific relief for me. And I appreciate that. So no, I don't support this amendment. Thank you. Additional comment or discussion? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thanks. First, I am just going to say I'm being pretty quiet because I have a very serious migraine and it hurts to open my eyes or look, you know, look anywhere or even talk. I would just point out that the people who said this amendment is only so-so, I mean, I'm one of them, but it is because I support the ordinance as it is. So and that that was also the case with anyone who said this isn't their favorite amendment. It was just, as many folks have said, a way to compromise, but it is hard to try to compromise with colleagues who are not looking to compromise. So I understand that. I I mean, mostly echo what Councilmembers Flaherty, Piedmont Smith, and Volan have said about this, no matter what, people are sleeping outside. So it's just a way, you know, to give more options. And I understand that the ordinance as a whole, you know, probably would allow people to sleep outside for years because we won't have any we won't have permanent housing or transitional housing very quickly. Although other cities have done it pretty quickly with some tiny home delishes and converting hotel rooms. So this is just a way to try to say, right, if there if there are beds, but it doesn't change the fact that there aren't always beds. So really, you know, there there would still be nights where people would need to sleep outside. I mean, every night somebody would need to sleep outside. Still, so they'll just continue to do that in parks, on public property, on private property, you know, in people's yards, on businesses, steps. That will just continue to happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I hope you feel better soon. So Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I actually just wanted to take just a minute to read a short comment from Vox Booker, who had had sent a message and missed the comment on that. And he said, I appreciate the incredible amount of diligence that the council has paid to this ordinance. I plead that the council will again consider tabling this ordinance till the only minority member, Councilmember Sims, is present and the public is able to engage. Residents with jobs, school-aged children, aren't able to engage at this late hour, waiting and further consideration costs us nothing. Thanks again. And he just wanted to be on the record for that. So I felt it worth saying.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. So additional comments? Thank you. With that, with that, Madam Clerk? There you are.
Yes?
Will you please call the roll on Amendment One to Ordinance 2106, please?
Of course. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
You're muted.
No. Smith?
Oh.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambulatory?
No.
And Flaherty?
Oh.
Okay. And that fails one to seven. Thank you. Moving on, we have Amendment Two.
I'm not inclined to introduce it. I don't know if any of the co-sponsors of the amendment are.
Councilmembers Piedmont Smith or Rosenbarger?
No.
I don't see a point in introducing it. It's just another compromise to work on concerns that were voiced, but no one here is up for that.
Additional comment? Oh, Mr. Flaherty?
I was just going to clarify a point of order, just sort of where we are in the meeting and what's happening. So we have considered all amendments that we were going to consider. We have taken public comment and councilmember questions on the ordinance, and we're now back for any final questions or comments on the ordinance as a whole and could then consider the question when members are ready.
So we are now looking at comments or questions from council?
Correct.
Thank you. But with that, council members, any comments or questions? Second call? Councilmember Volan?
Are we in debate now or questions?
We are in comments.
I I have comments on the ordinance as a whole. Is it is it time for that discussion?
Sorry if I was unclear. We should sequence it. Yes, any questions first and then comments debate. So questions, if anyone has, that would be first.
Councilmember Volan, I'm sorry. Did you have questions or comments?
I had comments, not questions.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, let's go to comments. Councilmember Volan?
Several of my colleagues are more concerned about tone than substance. It's like they've forgotten that they're politicians, that they signed up for this scrutiny, that somehow, sometime, somewhere, someone guaranteed them that there would be no dissent or disagreement. But all they can hear, all they choose to hear are the loudest, most disorderly critics and not their quiet colleagues who have in fact done their homework. Make no mistake, this claim that the ordinance itself is divisive is a political strategy. As someone who plays and teaches chess, I'm more than little offended by Councilor Rallo's cynicism questioning Councilwoman Flaherty's motives for bringing the legislation. But his unfortunate comments that we heard on his hot mic give away the game. Ad hominem is how some opponents of this ordinance approach legislating in general. If one disagrees with their political opinion, one is personally insulting them. It's the ultimate ad hominem defense. But then you can see this in the parliamentary parliamentary motions that they make. I note that my colleagues are quick to prioritize staff when the issue is one in which they agree. But when staff, for example, propose allowing duplexes by right, suddenly their strong concern for the opinions of staff weaken. I noted I note that my colleagues are quick to refer legislation to committee of the whole instead of standing committees because they claim to want to hear from all nine members. Yet when there's an issue they firmly disagree with and a member who may well agree with them is unavoidably absent, suddenly they have no hesitation about voting on it anyway, at now 2:45 in the morning after more than eight straight hours. This, too, is a political strategy worthy of criticism. They elevate and support staff and the public who agree with them already. They are not consistent or neutral in their application of rules of procedure. They're not interested in limiting the total time of questions or debate by instead spreading it out over weeks that would be respectful of everyone, including city staff whom they're forcing to sit through this marathon. These are absolutely political choices. That's why the no votes referred it to committee of the whole. Now you know the real reason why these same colleagues have been such bitter opponents of the use of standing committees. Their inconsistency with referring to certain people by their first name, their willingness to deny sleep to everyone who attended this meeting rather than spread out a necessary and fundamental discussion regardless of its predictable outcome.
I love this dude.
Committee of the whole lets them get legislation off the agenda in as few calendar days as possible. If you keep people at a meeting for eight hours, you make them sick of it. Any desire to get more information at the end of such a meeting is poo-pooed. Oh, we've been at this for eight hours already. They don't want to guarantee that everyone has heard or that all facts are found. They want to make you sit through eight hours so that you'll never want to come back again. It was within the power of a majority to prevent this train wreck by stretching this discussion out over at least one additional meeting. Ironically, by refusing to postpone, they're responsible for the meeting's monstrous length. Council opponents have made clear that they have no alternative and are unwilling to even hint at a timeline for developing one. Those members of the public who thanked us for being here so late should not have. Opponents of this ordinance had multiple opportunities to prevent this record-setting meeting, and they refused every time. I have never seen such an unprecedented demonstration of hardball in my entire career here. This is the longest city council meeting I have ever attended with a bullet. One last thing I want to say, and more general point, is to the reason why this legislation has been so difficult for Bloomington Rapid Ceterum because we have never come to agreement on the definition of the word resident. For years, as someone who came to Bloomington to attend IU, my belongingness to the community was apparently an open question because I came as an undergraduate. When does the statute of limitations run out on being from somewhere else in a city full of college students? As far as non-students are concerned, the answer is never. Students have a lot of relationship to people experiencing homelessness in the same way. So I think it's time we decide how do we define the term resident? I go to the ultimate source, the Bureau of the Census. The Census Act of 1790 established the concept of measuring persons, and they measure them according to what they call the usual residence of the person. It's defined as the place where a person lives and sleeps most of the time. This place is not necessarily the same as the person's voting residence or legal residence. They go on to say that determining usual residence is straightforward for most people. However, given our nation's wide diversity in types of living arrangements, the concept of usual residence has a variety of applications. Who they contemplate in measuring usual residence include people with a seasonal or second residence, people in group facilities, people in the process of moving, people in hospitals, children in shared custody arrangements, live-in employees, military personnel, and people who live in workers' dormitories. The two items on that list I left out because I wanted to emphasize them are college students and people experiencing homelessness. The key phrase in the Census's definition is where they live and sleep most of the time. People experiencing homelessness should be counted where they are on Census Day. But federal law holds that someone counts as a resident of a certain jurisdiction after no more than a year, making a majority of that time six months. If someone lives in Bloomington for six months straight, Bloomington is their usual residence. They are a resident of Bloomington. But wait, you ask, what about the transients of people experiencing homelessness? What if they go back and forth between districts? There's a ready answer for this, too. Students are frequently called transients as well because they move all the time, but their city address remains Bloomington even if their street addresses change. We have three at-large members of city council. It is not possible to appreciate students or people experiencing homelessness as Bloomingtonians unless you recognize that they are at-large constituents. That means that anyone who has doubt about who counts as a resident of the jurisdiction overseen by the government of the city of Bloomington should have an answer. Six months, and it doesn't matter on what street they you find them on any given night. This means that anyone that people people count. These are people. Students are people. People experiencing homelessness are people. The census counts everyone. It counts them regardless of their citizenship status. It counts them where they happen to be. To quote the Census website, "The U.S. Census Bureau is committed to counting every person once, only once, and in the right place." We know that parks are not the right place for those people, but they still count. They should still be treated as citizens of Bloomington. After six months, it doesn't matter where they came from. They are they are people just like the people some of my colleagues have heard from who have opposed this ordinance. They are people just like the staff whose welfare some of my colleagues prioritize over the welfare of other people. Let there be no doubt. It is incumbent upon the opponents of this ordinance to state affirmatively what their solution might be. They have yet to do so. They have refused to do so. I expect that they are not going to do so. Some of them have never introduced legislation in their careers. My some of my other colleagues have done, made their effort. They've advanced an affirmative argument, and all I hear is negative argument from the opponents. They must step up. It's incumbent upon them to come up with a solution because this is inhumane. It cannot stand, and I can't believe that we are setting a record tonight on this, thanks to their intransigence. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Rallo?
Difficult to say how to proceed after a long ad hominem attack by Councilmember Volan. But that is to say that I would like to point out that for the people who brought this forward, we understood that this was fast-tracked. It was brought forward in a rushed fashion. The administration said as much. They couldn't even determine the entire effect of the ordinance before it was introduced to council. So I find it a bit ironic that now we're talking, we're being blamed for fast-tracking it. Another thing I'd like to say is that had Council President Sims been here this evening, I'm not sure it would have changed the outcome. I've spoken to him about this and many other things. And let me say I have the utmost respect for Council President Sims. So really, what this amounts to, I think, is a very ambiguous and incomplete legislative document. It's superficially, it looks tenable. Superficially, it just says for the for anybody that you would approach, why not just let homeless people sleep in a park? What's the harm? And there's no cost incurred in doing that. Can't we just allow it? So that looks superficially like a like a very humane thing until you dig down, until you find out exactly what that means. It does create de facto homeless encampments in any city park. Now, it would self-evolve. Now, it would self-evolve, and we can't ignore it. So the city is responsible in many ways. And so then has to prepare for that eventuality if it were to become law. So it is undeveloped, it's still conceived, it's ambiguous. It codifies homeless encampments in parks where we've already seen once fatality. I don't think that, as Councilmember Smith said, that this amount of resources, and we know it's significant resources, involves multiple departments. Paula McDevitt provided a scenario for Bryant Park alone. Are we going to ignore that and say that that's invalid? I don't think so. I think these are the people that manage the city, so we have to listen to them. So these resources aren't fully known, but they're substantial. And is it wise to commit those resources for some individuals who cannot find shelter at this time? Now, the charge is, if we don't approve this, we have no alternative. We haven't offered any alternative. It's difficult to describe the alternative because the alternative is evolving. We've seen success in low-barrier shelters, and I think that we need to continue putting resources toward those. For those who can't find a place or won't find a place, I think that what was said earlier tonight by a member of the administration is that there has to be some means of discretion and leniency involved in helping them. But I think that to essentially effectively encourage people to camp in parks is inviting a substantial amount of hazard. Not to mention, you know, and the costs involved. Now, the costs go beyond just the monetary costs. The costs involve the impacts on, as we've heard from businesses, residents, from neighborhoods, and so forth. We don't know those costs right now. And in fact, I don't believe that this ordinance has been vetted, for instance, in the Bryant Park neighborhood. I don't think we've asked the Bryant Park neighborhood about having a homeless encampment there and gotten a response from them, or the Elm Hites neighborhood, or the Somax neighborhood who utilized that park. So, you know, the due diligence done hasn't been done for this ordinance. It has divided the community clearly this evening. I mean, you know, those who caution against adopting this because I think of very practical reasons are called all sorts of different names, right? And so we see that happening. Business interests that, you know, have spoken out against it have been excoriated. These are the business interests that, by the way, contribute to the service providers that we're hoping to build shelters with. So I think that this is a terrible thing that's happened as a result of introducing what is a very shallow, incomplete Band-Aid, as has been described by the authors of this amendment. So this is not a solution. We need to allocate real resources from the city to organizations to provide low-barrier shelters, absolutely need to do that. Clearly, many homeless people need services provided. We have to continue to help those service providers as well as a community. I don't think this helps homeless people to sleep in public parks. I think that it's a mistake. And I wish that we could have had a robust discussion without having it voting on a very flawed city policy as we're doing this evening at a very late hour. So I will be voting no. Thank you all.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Flaherty.
Human beings have a right to sleep. And if residents of our city, members of our community, have nowhere to go, then they should be allowed to sleep in public. It's the only humane thing to do, and currently that is not allowed. Currently, they can be asked to leave, made to leave, forced to leave by police. And that is unjust. Now, I look forward to solutions brought by the four colleagues who are going to vote against this ordinance. But I'm not holding my breath because they have not really engaged with us as we have tried to find solutions. And what they have repeatedly said and what the administration has repeatedly pointed to is the longer-term solutions that are being investigated by the group led by Ephraim Pfefferman and Tina Peterson. Long-term solutions are great, but we have immediate, short-term problems, life-or-death problems for the homeless community. And just because I said life or death, I need to once again reiterate that JT's death in Seminary Park in December was not because he was camping in the park. It was because of a variety of factors, but partially because his tent was removed. And that is from people who knew him and worked with him. Anyway, I would like to, sorry, my thoughts are a little bit discombobulated at this late hour. I would like to say that I do respect city staff, and I do recognize that city staff had a lot of work and a lot of dirty work to do. Dirty work, maybe I shouldn't have used that phrase. Maybe that was the police who had the dirty work to do. But I was referring to the staff who continually had to clean up at Seminary Park. I recognize this is hard work. This is probably not what they signed up for when they got a job in Public Works at the city of Bloomington. But, you know, some of that could have been prevented if we had given them, given the residence of that park, toilet facilities. So anyway, and I do respect the staff that were here tonight and presented their arguments. And, you know, they're doing what the mayor has decided. Now, the Councilmember Rallo said, you know, has anybody asked people in Bryant Park what they think about putting a homeless encampment in? Has anybody asked the neighbors who live near Bryant Park what they think about putting a homeless encampment in Bryant Park? Well, this ordinance does not put a homeless encampment in Bryant Park. So no, we have not asked. This ordinance gives the executive branch the option of setting aside public land somewhere in the city close to services for homeless encampments. So no, we have not contacted the immediate neighbors of any park because that decision is not part of this ordinance. Councilmember Rallo also said that we need to invest more in low-barrier shelters. Shelters are not the answer. The more shelter beds we create here, the more will probably be filled up by people coming from out of town. The answer is long-term housing. The answer is permanent housing. And that's what we need to work towards. But in the interim, we need to make it legal for people to just lay their head. We've all had a very long night. It's been very stressful. But everybody on this call, at least everybody on this city council, at the end of this, we can go to bed. And we know the police are not going to make us move. That's a luxury that every human being, that's not a luxury, that's a right that every human being should have. So let me see if I've covered everything that I wanted to say. Councilmember Rallo also says that this ordinance would not help people experiencing homelessness. Well, we've heard from people experiencing homelessness tonight, and we've heard from advocates for people experiencing homelessness. And they say, yes, it will help people experiencing homelessness. So I don't know where he thinks that, where my colleague thinks that he knows better than people who have actually had the experience of being homeless. So in short, I think it's a moral imperative for us to approve this ordinance. And I think we have immediate, short-term problems. And if my colleagues are opposed to this ordinance, I expect them to bring some solutions to these immediate, short-term problems in the near future, and I would be happy to work with them on that. Good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
All right, thanks. I'll try to speak to a few things. Thanks for members of the public who stayed with us and also the city staff and council members. I think the notion that this is rushed or flawed or poorly thought out, I just don't, I think that's really contradicted by the unanimous support from all of the sheltering agencies and members of the Continuum of Care Board. These are people who literally work for decades, in some cases, on these issues. And they know very well the ins and outs and challenges of every aspect of this. And we worked with them in its development, we worked with other stakeholders as well. We had many meetings with city staff. We didn't bring this because, when we did, because to fast-track things or something like that. We brought it because we had reached a fundamental impasse with the administration. We had had four meetings or so. It didn't make sense to continue having them when we fundamentally disagreed about an issue. This council apparently also fundamentally disagrees about that issue, which is, again, if an unhoused person has no place to go, literally no bed anywhere in this town where they can sleep, including in shelters, should they have a legal place to sleep? And the administration doesn't think so? That's incredibly disappointing to me as a resident of Bloomington, as a Democrat. Clearly, our colleagues in Indianapolis sure think so. Every single Democrat up there thinks so, the Democratic mayor thinks so. You know, and this was really particularly clarified by the amendment that was brought and failed because it wasn't going to make any headway. If the concern was we weren't going to have permanent and transitional housing for folks, we added an amendment that would have just said simple shelter beds, just if there's no shelter bed available to you, if there's literally no bed, should you have a legal place to spend the night? And sadly, in Bloomington, our government has said no. Again, I just find that so incredibly depressing. Regarding the weird attack about my alleged chess comments, I had an email from Jeff Richardson who organized that meeting. He said, "I listened to the unhoused portion of your remarks at a recent Elm Hites Neighborhood Association meeting. I did not hear anything about a chess game that you are allegedly playing with the city administration." I literally think that didn't happen. We had people who listened to it now and verified that, it sounds like, so that's pretty weird. I also remain very disappointed in my colleagues for insisting on an eight-and-a-half-hour meeting in which our council president, chair of the Public Safety Committee, and somebody who I know cares deeply about these issues, was unable to attend. I think that was just a very poor move on our part. Again, just disappointed. And it's not because I think Councilmember Sims would change the vote. I think he was probably leaning against it. I just think this is very clearly an important issue to the community. We heard from, in fact, a lot of Black residents of Bloomington who felt particularly disappointed that Councilmember Sims, who they see as something of a representative for Black voices in Bloomington, was excluded from the conversation by virtue of the votes and procedural motions we made tonight. Not because he would change the vote, but because he should have been part of the conversation and part of the discussion. So again, I am deeply disappointed in my colleagues over that. I don't know what else to say. This is a values thing, and that's it. All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenberger?
Thank you. Okay, I feel scattered here. I think I would start by saying, I think disappointing has been the word of the night tonight. I would say I am thoroughly disappointed in the unwillingness to engage in this, in this discussion. I have some cans here, like, I think you can't say we don't criminalize homelessness and that becomes fact. It's not legal to sleep outside, so it is illegal to sleep outside. We can't just say things and make it so. That was said at the Committee of the Whole meeting by a council member. I also think, somebody said this in a meeting the other day, you can't say no without a yes. And that is about sort of one way you, you know, teach children. But it's saying you can't just say no without offering up a different idea. And I would say, what we've heard tonight is the solution to this is a collaborative approach. But no, a collaborative approach is an approach, not a solution. So we've heard the administration say they don't have a solution, but we should ask the experts. And I would say, of course, the cosponsors thought that was a really good idea. And actually, we talked about that in meetings with the administration. And then we talked to the experts, and this is the ordinance that got drafted. It's also what other cities are doing. So I mean, I would say not one person, either my fellow colleagues, anyone in the administration, or any public comment, has offered an alternative solution. And I think, I think there's a reason for that. I would say you can't compromise with people who are not willing to engage. And I think this meeting tonight shows that. The council members who oppose this ordinance have said many things. One told us, one told the cosponsors what we did not do, how we weren't inclusive, I think was one example. But I would say she has no idea because she did not take part in any of the work. So it's hard to kind of like know what went on and what didn't go on if you weren't present. Another councilperson said, and this has been spoken to already a little bit, that this is fast-tracked. But in relation to what? No one asked me how much time I've spent on this. I spend most of my days on council work, which I think is different from other council members that have second jobs or full-time jobs. And so over the course of the last few months, I've spent hundreds of hours on this. And as Councilmember Flaherty said, I think that shows by the amount of public support and the amount of support from people working in this field. Some of my colleagues in support of this ordinance say it's now up to the council members who oppose it to come up with a solution that works. But I'm actually not okay with that because one councilperson who opposes this does not think it's council's role to draft legislation. Every councilperson was asked at the outset if they wanted to work on this, and the three cosponsors are the three who said yes. So I don't want to leave this up to the people who haven't taken a role in this. I don't think that would be a good approach. So mainly what I'm saying is, I don't want to give up on this. I mean, I'm feeling very disappointed and very discouraged, but I looked up this little quote that I like, "Being positive in a negative situation is not naive, it is leadership." And that just like really helps me keep going when I think there's so much, so many barriers and so many roadblocks to trying to do good progressive work here. A lot of folks have already spoken to, what is a Democrat in Bloomington? I don't think we have a good definition for that. And it is interesting that in Indianapolis, 10 Republicans voted for this. And here, we didn't even really get to have, give it like the due diligence it deserves. People, well, I don't know why, I'm not going to speak to the reasons why you didn't want to give it the due diligence it deserves, but like that is astonishing to me. So I will just say, like, today I was reflecting on like why I ran, and I looked at my primary speech. And just saying, you know, part of it was, it's not okay to say like, everybody is included here without actually taking the steps to make sure taking the steps to make sure everyone is included. And when I was talking about that, I was talking about, you know, vulnerable populations and people with different backgrounds and people with different housing statuses. And I still just very much believe that's true, that like, a reason I ran is because I'm sick of the status quo, and I think this is just more of it. And so I'm just going to keep going. I think these are really hard battles. I don't think it's dividing the community. I think a lot of people came out in support of this. And I think uncomfortable conversation is not dividing the community, but it is what needs to happen to move anything forward. So I'm just going to keep going, and I'm excited to work again with my colleagues who really want to find a solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, if I may, I'd like to share some thoughts. Several commenters, and I'm combining comments here, said, you know, I don't want to attribute motives to those who don't support this ordinance, but I don't understand why you feel that way. I want to at least share my thinking on that, and it may not be agreeable to you, and it may not be satisfactory, but I'd at least like to try and explain my thinking. Most of it clusters in different areas. The questions I ask myself, what are the duties of a city? What are the duties of a council? And what's our best path forward legislatively? All right. So the duties of a city. One of the comments that has come up since last week is the notion that the city has somehow washed its hands of this, and those are my words, not the general words, but the city has said it's not their responsibility. I didn't take their comments that way. I took them at face value in the notion that partnerships would be necessary. I expect the city to respond to issues of homelessness. And as a council member, I want to see that. Okay? I also think it's important to recognize what is beyond the expertise of the city. And I have thought of little else, actually, in the last several days, and I was trying to think of how to explain this point. And it occurred to me, and this is an imperfect analogy, but it occurred to me that we have police and firefighters and parks employees who are all trained in first aid. And many of our police officers are actually trained in basic trauma medicine as well. And they recognize that they can, they can help someone who has been injured in a car accident or sprained an ankle at a parks event or some. They also recognize when they encounter someone who is seriously injured, who is in crisis, that it's time to call a doctor. It's time to call an ambulance and get that person to the hospital where doctors and nurses can provide that specialized care. In some ways, this seems like a similar circumstance. So do I, does the city have a role? Of course it does. Does that, do I expect them to play a role? Absolutely. I also expect the ultimate response to be a function of partnerships. Okay? Duties of council. Okay? A few people have offered the comment, you know, to the effect of you're just voting no because you don't want to deal with this problem. Certainly, you're entitled to perceive us that way if you like. I would respectfully disagree. Not, not believing that this ordinance is the best path forward is not the equivalent of not wanting to deal with this problem, at least for me, it's not. So I would offer that. The other thing is, I think about duties of council, we've heard a lot about inclusion tonight, and I think, I can't remember the exact circumstance, that a couple of meetings ago, several people have made the comment that we need to listen to the people who are here. Look how many people have spoken in support of this ordinance. And I agree, that's overwhelmingly among public comment tonight, we have heard support for this ordinance. We also need to listen to people who, for whatever reason, are not speaking in this meeting, the people who email us, the people who call us, including people who have told us, look, I'm too intimidated to speak up. I don't want to get shouted down. I don't want to get called names. So we have to, as council members, yes, we have to acknowledge even people we disagree with. And that means there's going to, a range of viewpoints are going to come to us. And so I would offer that point as a duty of council. One other important duty of council, and again, this speaks particularly to the ordinance. I honestly can't get past my fiscal concerns over this ordinance. I really can't. At best, we have ambiguity over how much this will actually cost. We are the fiscal body of the city. I don't think we've even come near having an adequate discussion of what this would require in terms of staffing and what that costs. And in good conscience, I can't vote on legislation where that's so unclear. I would respectfully disagree that the, the four-digit figure, I think it was several thousand dollars last week would cover this. I, I don't believe that's the case. I would respectfully disagree with that. But just in terms of the ordinance itself, my fiscal concerns are still there. So beyond that, several people have actually talked about urgency this evening. And I want to come back to that because I, I apologize if I'm stumbling here. It's precisely because of urgency that I think we cannot confine ourselves to only finding amendments to the ordinance that's sitting right here on the table. If we limit ourselves to only making changes to 2106, then I don't think we're going to have the, a particularly robust discussion. I don't think we're going to make progress even in four weeks' time, and we will burn up more valuable time. And I agree that there is a sense of urgency. So I would just offer those thoughts. Again, I realize that, that my thinking is acceptable to some, but there it is. So with that, any additional comments? All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule on ordinance 2106? Okay, we are starting with Councilmember Smith.
Oh.
Sandberg?
No.
Rollin?
No.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scandalory?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And that fails on a 4-4 vote. With that, Mr. Lucas, I believe we move to an additional period of public comment. Is that correct?
That is correct, and this would be for items not on tonight's agenda, and also for folks who didn't speak during the first period of public comment yesterday.
Councilmember Flaherty, did I see?
I was just thinking of the 10:30 rule and the fact that we normally don't take council action or
That's legislation.
Matters. Right, right. I was thinking of that exactly. Council action, public comment is probably not council action. So that's why my hand shot up.
Thank you. All right. Again, this is the second period of public comment. According to the agenda, there is a maximum of 25 minutes allowed for this. For those of you who have an interest in offering comment, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. If there are multiple people wanting to make comments, single device, please let us know that, so we won't know that automatically. So Mr. Lucas?
Yes, and I'll just remind folks one more time, this is for items not on tonight's agenda. And again, if you spoke during the first period of public comment, you shouldn't, shouldn't request to speak again. I believe first up I saw Vox Booker, who should now be able to unmute.
Mr. Booker, welcome. Please go ahead. I'm not getting an audio. Is anybody else? Perhaps we could circle back to Mr. Booker while the audio works itself out.
Next up, I believe, is Chase Hadley.
Mr. Hadley?
Hi, this is Chase Hadley again. I have already spoken, and I am just here to comment. Once again, it is very shameful that you are not listening to us. Your constituents are here. We've been here for hours, just like you have. And I just think that is incredibly shameful. Dave Rollo, your camera is on. Don't forget that. We can see you're smirking every time somebody calls you out on something. Ron Smith, you like to keep pointing about, about how this just won't work, rather than listening to your constituents, the people who are currently facing houselessness, who are telling you over and over and over again that this will work, this will help in one way or another. This isn't some big convoluted problem. It's simply just allowing people to not get arrested for sleeping in a park when necessary. Sue Scamber, sorry, excuse me.
Point of, point of information, but point of order. Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Hadley, to interrupt you, but this comment period is actually for items that are not on the agenda. So it's not about the ordinance. Yeah, sorry.
I apologize. We will not be silenced in the future. Peace.
Mr. Hadley, thank you. Mr. Lucas?
I believe Jacob Schwartz is up next.
Yeah, you've heard from me a couple of times. And I, I just wanted to say that Susan, Ron, Dave, Sue, y'all disgust me. And I hope at the next meeting-
Point of order, Mr. Schwartz.
I don't care about point of order. This is an issue that needs to be addressed.
I think I have.
Vice President?
I hope you have an, hmm.
Please, we cannot accept this kind of
I hope you have something next session because you said we needed a better plan and then refused to provide one.
This is commenting on the ordinance that's, it's already disposed of.
And just the general point of order is, as strongly as folks may feel, we should avoid as much as possible calling out or attacking individual council members. If there's an argument that's been made that you would like to speak to in some way, although of course 2106 is not subject for discussion right now, that's okay. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I believe all of the requests for comments are from folks who spoke during the first general period of public comments. Again, I don't know, Fox Booker would like to comment. I believe he's the only one I see that didn't comment earlier in the meeting.
Mr. Booker, welcome. Please go ahead.
Can he be unmuted?
Should be.
Mr. Booker, if you're having difficulty unmuting, could you type into chat and let us know that?
My apologies. I do see a request from Kathy Crabtree, who I don't believe spoke, spoke before during the general public comment period. Kathy should now be able to unmute.
Okay, and let's come back to Mr. Booker then, when we can. Ms. Crabtree, please go ahead. Thank you for being here.
And I am not speaking about the legislation. I'm speaking about some behaviors. And I'm not going to diss people. I'm just, I would like to talk about a few things. The fact that one, that Dave mentioned that he had talked to Jim, and so he knew what his position would be on this ordinance is beside the point. The point is that a group of white council members silenced Jim by not allowing him to be involved in this conversation. I might recommend that Dave and some of your colleagues-
Vice President, point of order. This is also out of line as well.
Okay, I thought I just couldn't talk about the ordinance.
No.
Oh, well, then, let me just say this. I recommend that you all take the Black Lives Matter B-Town training. Thank you.
Ms. Crabtree, thank you. Mr. Lucas? Have we been able to connect with Mr. Booker yet?
I don't believe so. And I believe Danielle Bird has a I'm sorry. Danielle Bird is asking to read a statement from a homeless person experiencing homelessness that was not shared earlier. I'm not sure if the chair wants to consider that.
I would rather err in the direction of yes than no. So if Ms. Bird wants to read that statement, please do.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This is not specifically about an ordinance. It's just that an individual, by, all I know is the initial is J, and that this came through at 6:47 during our meeting. This individual said, I guess the cops were just at my camp and told us we have to move by five tomorrow, and that we have to clean the place up completely from years and years of people that were there long before us leaving their trash, or they would file charges. We have until five tomorrow evening. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you to Jay and Ms. Bird. Thank you for relaying that. Additional comments? Mr. Lucas? Could you unmute, please?
My apologies. I don't believe I see any requests from folks who didn't speak during the first period of public comment earlier in the meeting.
Second call then, for those who wish, who have not commented during the first period, but wish to comment something, comment on something not on the agenda this evening? And final call? Thank you. With that, let's take up matters of council scheduling. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I'll be brief. The council has a work session this Friday at 12 noon. There may be few items coming to the council in the next legislative cycle that could be previewed this Friday. Two of them have to do with Title 15 revisions. One of those revisions would amend the turn restrictions for signalized intersections, so no turn on reds. And I believe the other Title 15 ordinance may be more of a cleanup ordinance from, brought by the planning department. There is also a general Title II ordinance that the administration has been working on that I think has various amendments throughout the title, and that may be ready to preview. So unless
Do we need a show of hands for residents that, or excuse me, council members that can be there, have an interest in being there on Friday? I do. At least two. So I would suggest keeping it, and that gives folks the option of deciding if they do want to come at some point. Would that be acceptable? Mr. Lucas?
I think we'll plan to hold that unless there's a motion to cancel it tonight.
I move we cancel the work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cancel the work session this coming Friday. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
You're muted.
Sorry. I just think that, that only two council members is, you know, it takes a lot of staff time to go to the work session and present. And so it just doesn't seem like for two council members, it would be worthwhile. It's nothing against the two council members that said they would attend.
Is that, is that all?
Yes.
Additional comments? Or would anyone like to pre, excuse me, propose rescheduling that or scheduling it for a different time?
And Vice President?
Yes, Councilmember Rollin?
Mr. Lucas, what is a week from Friday like?
That would be March the 12th. That would be the Friday, the same Friday those items go out in the packet. So again, the ability for staff to make any adjustments to the materials that they've prepared for the pack, it would be- that they've prepared for the packet would be limited. That's what we.
Withdraw it. I'm not going to propose an alternate time. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table to cancel this Friday's work session. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Rollin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scandalory?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith? Smith?
Did I say yes?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And that succeeds, that passes 6-2. That, so we will cancel this Friday's work session. Sorry. Mr. Lucas, additional scheduling matters.
I believe that's it. Thank you.
And could you, could we review one more time what is on, what is on deck for Wednesday, the 10th?
I believe we have a land use committee meeting scheduled for 5:30 that, that evening. And I believe that's it, if I'm remembering correctly. The two items related to the utilities department, the rate case, and the associated bond ordinance will appear at the March 17th regular session.
Okay. Heartfelt thanks, particularly to the public who stayed with us this long. Anything else for the good of the order? And if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Will you adjourn?
Second.
Collectively, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone, and thank you.